Ms. Martinez.
All councilors present and a quorum has been declared.
Okay, thank you. Up next, we have agenda approval.
Mayor, I move that we approve the agenda as written.
Second that.
Okay, we have a motion and second, any further discussion? If not, please start voting. Ms. Martinez.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, at this time, I believe our city manager, Ms. Brooks, would like to make a comment.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. For anyone in the audience who might be interested in signing the petition for the recall, the district attorney, our police chief is in the back if you want to do that before leaving. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Brooks. That brings us to the next item on the agenda under citizen comments. This is the segment of the agenda where we ask anyone who would like to make any comments to come up to the podium. We do ask that you keep your comments to within three minutes. If you're still talking at the three-minute mark, I will politely ask you to end the conversation at that time. We'll start off here with the real audience before we go to Zoom. Do we have anyone in the audience who would like to make any comments? Okay, don't see anyone making any comments, so we'll go ahead and go to Zoom. Ms. Martinez, will you give the Zoom participants instruction on how to raise their hands so we can recognize them?
Yes, sir. If you're on the Zoom app and you want to speak for citizen comment, you'll use the raise your hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're on a telephone, you'll dial star nine. Mayor, I don't see anyone raising their hand.
Okay, we don't have anyone in Zoom, so we'll go ahead and close the citizen comment section, and we'll go ahead and move down the agenda to ceremonial items tonight. We have four different proclamations and just share with you how it's going to work tonight. We have four different proclamations. When we mention the proclamation that's coming up, if you would like to come up to the podium, say a few words, and then council members will make comments. We usually share the role of reading the proclamation, so we're going to have four different council members helping out tonight in reading the proclamations. When they finish reading the proclamation, we will come down and take a picture with your group picture, okay? All right, so the first one up is Municipal Clerks Week Proclamation, and that's going to be read by Counselor Carson, but Ms. Martinez, would you like to come up with your team over to the podium and give us a little brief update or say something? You're going to be okay. We're not going to have to vote or anything.
I didn't prepare anything to say. I thought you were just going to read the proclamation and we could smile and take a picture. So Municipal Clerks Week is this week, happening this week. The clerks profession has been around for, I think it's fifty-three years officially on that proclamation this year. So we're one of the oldest government positions and it's just a nice little thing to be recognized, I guess. And I wanted to bring my staff because we're all clerks in the office and it's not just me, so they help me out a lot when I need them to.
Okay, did any of them want to say anything? No? No? Okay, all right.
They're very quiet.
Counselor Carson is going to give us the honors of reading the proclamation tonight.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Holly and Susanna and Angela. I'm sorry, I'll remember Angela. Fifty-third Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week, May first through May seventh, two thousand and twenty-two. Whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of our local government, exists through the world, and whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local government bodies and agencies of government at other levels, and whereas professional municipal clerks have pledged to ever be mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, and whereas the professional municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community, and whereas professional municipal clerks annually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the professional municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations. And whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of professional municipal clerk, now therefore, I on behalf of Ty Coleman, Mayor of Alamosa, and on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim the week of May first through May seventh, two thousand and twenty-two, as Professional Municipal Clerks Week, and further extend appreciation to our professional municipal clerks, Holly Martinez, Susanna Gallegos, and Angela Yon, and to all the professional municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their extraordinary dedication to the communities they represent, given under Ty Coleman's ad, City of Alamosa, Colorado, the fourth day of May, two thousand and twenty-two.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Up next, we have the historic, I mean historic, preservation month proclamation by Counselor V. Hill. He's going to give us honors, so if that board would like or committee would like to come up, that would be great.
Mayor and council members, we appreciate you having us here this evening. I'm Andrea Bachmann, this is Dawn Thompson and Patrick Stanford, all members of H-PAC. And yeah, we appreciate you recognizing Historic Preservation Month. We are celebrating by putting in a few articles in the paper, so be on the lookout for those.
Thank you, thank you. So tonight, Counselor V. Hill is going to do the honors of reading the proclamation because he's one of the liaisons on that board, am I right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good deal.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Historic Preservation Month Proclamation, May, two thousand and twenty-two. Whereas the City of Alamosa, in celebration of the month of May as archaeology and historic preservation month, recognizes that historic sites and structures in the community are symbols of our heritage and valuable assets to the quality of life in our community. These structures anchor our downtown, our residential areas, and the larger community, upholding the native character of our city and instilling civic pride by virtue of their very presence. Their potential as resources and attractors for heritage tourism is great. The events, businesses, and experiences these sites have hosted connect us to one another and form a vital part of the fabric of our community. And whereas Alamosa's many historic structures represent a diversity of economic and architectural trends that are integral to the past and future development of this great community founded one hundred and forty-four years ago, the city is actively engaged in recognizing these emblems of our heritage through the Alamosa Historic Registry. Now therefore, be it resolved that Mayor Coleman of the City of Alamosa, on behalf of the entire city council, proclaims the month of May, two thousand and twenty-two as Historic Preservation Month and encourages its citizens to advance historic preservation activities in the community.
Thank you, thank you, Counselor V. Hill.
Mayor, can I say a quick word?
Yes, please.
Just want to recognize one of the members of the board, Dawn Thompson. He's been on that board since two thousand and five. And so just that volunteer, that was awesome.
Thank you, Counselor V. Hill. Thank you for reading the proclamation. We appreciate that. Okay, up next, we have another proclamation for Police Week Proclamation. And tonight, Counselor Woodward is going to do the honors of reading that proclamation, but we'll let Chief say some words before we read the proclamation.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, I appreciate this time. So I'm kind of like Holly. I didn't really prepare anything. I was waiting for that thing to be read, but just a little history on it. What it is, is, I mean, it was basically started when President John F. Kennedy was in office and, you know, it's what sixty-some years ago. So they've been honoring Police Week, which Police Day, or the day that's actually recognized is the fifteenth, which is next Saturday, I believe, or Sunday. But the whole week, there is Police Memorial Week. And that week is really supposed to be there for people to recognize officers that have fallen in the line of duty. So we also do a little memorial at the Police Department, and this year's going to be our sixteenth year of doing it to recognize officers that have fallen here in the San Luis Valley and our state as well. But I'd like to thank the mayor, city council, city staff, and our community for the support that they have all shown us as law enforcement throughout my entire career. I've told you about the ceremony yesterday, but I wanted to go a little bit further on that. So it's May eleventh at five-thirty in front of the Police Department. It will be followed with a dinner and no charge, so we'd sure like to see you guys show up. We'll be doing that in the Fire Department directly west of the Police Department, so community is invited as well. So spread the word. We'd like to see you all there. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. And thank you so very much for everything you do and your team as well. Appreciate it.
We all appreciate that.
Okay, we'll have Counselor Woodward.
Police Week Proclamation, May of two thousand and twenty-two. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May fifteenth as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which it falls as Police Week. And whereas the members of law enforcement and the Alamosa Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of Alamosa. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of their police department, and that members of our police department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence or disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression or intimidation. And whereas the City of Alamosa Police Department has grown to be a modern and scientific law enforcement agency, which unceasingly provides a vital public service. And whereas Ty Coleman, City of Alamosa, call upon all citizens of Alamosa and upon all patriotic, civil, and educational organizations to observe the week of May ninth, two thousand and twenty-two as Police Week with appropriate ceremonies in which all of our people may join in commemorating police officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities and in doing so have established for themselves an inviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. Further, I further call upon all citizens of Alamosa to observe Sunday, May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of those peace officers who through their courageous deeds have lost their lives or have become disabled in the performance of duties. Now therefore, by virtue of the authority vested in Ty Coleman, Mayor of the City of Alamosa, do hereby honor law enforcement officers across the country and the Alamosa Police Department and proudly proclaim the week of May nineteenth, or May ninth, two thousand and twenty-two as Police Week and May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two as Peace Officers Memorial Day.
Okay. The next proclamation is the Arbor Day Proclamation. And Counselor Liz Hensley is going to do the honors, but if anyone's here would like to come up to the podium with this proclamation, sure appreciate it. How you doing? And feel free to start making any comments.
Yeah, thanks for having us in the Tree Board and being actively involved with the efforts, both in terms of input you provide and also the finances to plant the trees and for the staffing to take care of the trees we have here in town. And I have a further, longer PowerPoint presentation that'll be given in just a few minutes. I'll leave most of the comments of that, but thank you again this evening.
Okay, you're welcome. Counselor Hensley is going to do the honors of reading the proclamation today. Thank you, Counselor Hensley.
Thank you very much, and I'm very honored that Counselor Daniel and myself are both co-representatives from council for the Tree Board now. We speak for the trees. I can't help but always think of Dr. Seuss. You know, when you're the fourth one on the list, you got to start with something funny, right? All right, whereas in eighteen seventy-two, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting heating and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, producing life-giving oxygen, and providing habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees where they are planted are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, Ty Coleman, Mayor of Alamosa, Colorado, and on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim May sixteenth through the twenty-second as Arbor Day Week in the City of Alamosa. And I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day Week and to support efforts to protect our trees and our woodlands. Furthermore, I urge all citizens to plant trees, to gladden the heart, and promote the well-being of this and future generations.
Thank you, Counselor Hensley. Great job, everyone. Feels good to be able to do proclamations again. Good job. Appreciate all of you. Thank you. Okay, that brings us to the next item on the agenda, Consent Calendar. A, Counselor V. Hill.
Mayor, I move that we approve Consent Calendar A.
Second.
We have a motion and second, any further discussion? Nope? Okay, please start voting.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. That brings us to the next item on the agenda under Regular Business, Presentations from Outside Agencies. Looks like we have three presentations today. And as a reminder, we have the clock running up there so everyone will know, you know, when the ten-minute limit has come up. So the first one is the annual update from the Alamosa Bicycle Coalition. Is anyone here representing that group today? No? Okay, so we'll go ahead and move on down to the next one. Retired and Senior Volunteer Program of Alamosa County. Okay, hi there.
Hello, and thank you for having me tonight.
You're welcome.
So my name is Nancy Harris, and I am the manager of the RSVP program in Alamosa County. That stands for Retired and Senior Volunteer Program. Are any of you familiar with the RSVP program? Yes, I've got some nodding heads. There was an RSVP program in a prior permutation a few years back, and that was managed by the Behavioral Health Group. This RSVP program, it has to have a host organization, and the host organization is Spark the Change Colorado out of Denver. And in two thousand and twenty-one, so just about a year ago, they applied for an AmeriCorps senior grant and were awarded this grant for an RSVP program in seven counties in Colorado. Alamosa County is one of those seven counties that received funding from the federal government through AmeriCorps seniors to host this program. And so I want to tell you a little bit about it so you're aware of it because it's fairly new to Alamosa County. And let me just tell you a little bit about Spark the Change Colorado, my host organization, the company that manages this program with me. They are an organization that is actually statewide, has a lot of programs, including a mental wellness program in which people can receive free access to mental health services in their community. We also help with disaster relief such as flood and fire and COVID- nineteen. So we were, got a presence for the Marshall Fire recently in Boulder area. But the primary focus of Spark the Change Colorado is to connect volunteers to opportunities across the state. So I'm going to tell you a little bit more about that. You're probably familiar with AmeriCorps Senior because we have a large AmeriCorps presence in this valley. And this is an AmeriCorps senior program which features folks who are fifty-five and older, and I'll get into that in a moment. The Retired and Senior Volunteer Program has been since nineteen seventy-one, so over fifty years, one of the largest volunteer efforts in the nation for people fifty-five and up that engages older adults to help organizations meet community needs. The RSVP program in Alamosa County is currently recruiting both volunteers and volunteer stations, so places where volunteers can volunteer their time to meet food insecurity needs in Alamosa County. So I'll talk a little bit about food insecurity because that is the focus. When applying for an AmeriCorps senior grant, one has to pick a focus area. And Spark the Change Colorado picked food insecurity, and I'll tell you a little bit about why that's the case here in the county. According to the Feeding America website, food insecurity is defined as a lack of consistent access to enough food for every person in the household to live an active, healthy life. According to the USDA, more than thirty-eight million people, including twelve million children, experienced food insecurity in the United States. Now, in two thousand and nineteen, the rate of food insecurity in Alamosa County was fourteen point five percent, whereas the rate across Colorado in two thousand and nineteen was nine point eight percent. And according to the Food Bank Network of San Luis Valley, one in four people living in the valley utilize the Food Bank Network during any given year. So food insecurity therefore is a real issue in Alamosa County, and they, Spark the Change Colorado, recognized that and wanted to address that by engaging folks that are fifty-five and older. And the other counties, just so you're aware of the other counties that have this RSVP program through Spark the Change Colorado, Los Anamis, Werfino, Montezuma, Park, Jefferson, and Broomfield Counties. So Alamosa is one of those counties, one of those seven counties. You may wonder, why would somebody who's fifty-five and older want to volunteer for RSVP? In addition to addressing the food insecurity issues in the county, there are a number of benefits. And you do have a flyer which does list some of these benefits, but I'm going to go over them so that everybody can hear. So if somebody decides to sign up and become a volunteer through RSVP, you'll get thoughtful matching with opportunities that fit your needs and strengths. I helped to select the location for the individual volunteer who is signing up. A volunteer will build meaningful connections with community members in their area, so it's great networking and community and building. You'll participate and work with a purpose that benefits your community. Volunteering also increases confidence, combats depression, and helps you stay physically healthy. So lots of benefits. And depending on the volunteer shift, a volunteer may be eligible for meals and some mileage reimbursement. So who can volunteer and what are the opportunities? As I've already mentioned, RSVP is for folks who are fifty-five and older and want to make an impact in Alamosa County by engaging in work that addresses local food insecurity. Now currently, I have, I'm working with four great organizations that are already addressing these needs or are going to address these needs in the valley, so let me tell you a little bit about them. I'm working with the San Luis Valley Local Foods Coalition, which includes the Rio Grande Farm Park, and we have volunteer workdays on every Saturday, sorry, one Saturday of every month. And I am trying to connect volunteers that are fifty-five and older with that organization. I'm working with the Area Agency on Aging Region Eight, which includes their nutrition program, such as the congregate meals that are served at the Alamosa Senior Citizen Center. I have a dining room host who's a volunteer there who's greeting folks and signing them up for the meal. I just signed on the Food Bank of the San Luis Valley, the Food Bank Network of the San Luis Valley, and I'm going to be placing volunteers in their Alamosa food pantry. And finally, my other hat is that I'm the manager of the Alamosa Live Music Association. You probably recognize me from that. And I'm actually able to kind of marry those two jobs by offering a food drive this summer during our Sundays at six concert series. So we're going to be inviting folks who come to the concerts to bring a non-perishable food item and then an RSVP volunteer. And then an RSVP volunteer that I sign up will be bringing that food to the food pantry the next day. So it's kind of an exciting marriage. And to get involved would be to contact me directly. My contact information is on your flyer. And I do have business cards available as well. So I just want to thank you again for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you so very much, Nancy. We really appreciate it. Any council having a comment? Okay, Councilor Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor. So Nancy, thank you so much. I'm super excited that the RSVP program is like up and running again. How many volunteers do you currently have?
I have under 10 right now, so I'm just getting going.
Okay.
Yeah.
And what is your capacity for volunteers?
We're hoping to have, in any given year, up to about 75.
Wonderful. Great.
So I have a lot of room, yeah.
Thank you so much for the work.
Yeah, you're welcome. Any other questions?
No, Nancy. I'll wrap it up with comments. I'm excited to hear about the food drive concert that's coming up. That should be good, good community support, too.
Yeah.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay, up next, that brings us to the Veterans Memorial Committee. I see quite a few in the audience today, so feel free to come up to the podium.
Hi.
Hi.
I brought a little PowerPoint just to give you some visuals. It's short, don't worry. Not a bunch of graphs. Do you like graphs?
No.
There it is. Okay. So I'll just give you the signal. It's short. So my name is Brenda Fowley. I am a board member on the Alamosa Veterans Memorial Park Project. I got involved with, I was going to the meetings as my former job and decided after that was over that I would like to continue on with this board, so we can go to the next one. So just a little bit of perspective on what's in the PowerPoint, how we're organized, our purpose, and where we're at. Okay. So I would like to introduce our board members. Frank Pines, this is actually the brainchild of him, as he started being on and has been working several years to try to get something. At one point, he was asking about, was it a 50-foot missile? How much that would cost to bring it up from Alabama or something? So anyway, it's evolved from there. Frank Pines is our president. Janet Yon is our vice president. Cindy Burbick is a treasurer. James Owen with Adam State is our secretary. Mike Yon is Alamosa County Commissioner, obviously. Bill Brown is the new Alamosa Veterans Service Officer. Helen Segman and I are at-large members. So like we said, we are trying to complete the outdoor park project, offer a reflective area to honor our veterans and Alamosa open to the public. The park will include a full-size statue, outdoor lighting, seating, and a trail system connecting the various entities that reside in the area. We started a little bit of fundraising. Currently, we have $13,635 raised to date. I believe the city contributed approximately $3,000 in 2019. So we very much appreciate that. But yeah, we're going to be doing, we just recently acquired our 501(c)(3) status like in December. So that's going to allow us to get in front of foundations, do fundraisers. We need about half a million dollars. So the project will be located in front of the newest county building, kind of on the corner of Highway 160 and Airport Road. The dirt, obviously, the dirt work will be the first task at hand, and Alamosa County Road and Bridge will be has agreed to do that as an in-kind project. Also, I'd like to point out just the proximity to the highway, that it is, will be very visible to tourists and with the ample parking there and the eventual trail system, which I think is really a cool component of it. It's something very different. It'll give a lot of employees out in that area, the visitors, and even court folks a place to maybe instead of walking on the side of the road where I usually see them, so. So obviously, we're just kind of broken out in phases. The first phase, or the next phase is the base and the concrete comes next. As you can see, it's going to be set on a star shape that's kind of be elevated towards the middle. Alberto Melzus is doing the sculpture. It will be about nine feet tall. This is a replica of what he's doing. I encourage you to spin this around, because it's pretty powerful. At one point, Louis Ans, Senator Ans, was on our committee. He's been to a lot of veterans memorials, and he's never seen anything quite like this. It just kind of hits home. So you can kind of tell from the picture up there, it will be three-dimensional, have a wall, a place for people to walk, be ADA compliant. So a cost for that is approximately $125,000 for that part. Okay, next. We did have a competition to name the statue. It was Sacrifice for Country. Like I said, will be commissioned by Alberto, nine feet high. We, bronze has gone up since the last quote we got, so we're currently looking at about $260,000 for that. Okay, next. So we plan to work, we spoke with SLV Go in the early days, and we plan to, they agreed to, when we got to that part, that we would implement a trail system. I think there's a lot of connectivity out there, not only employees, but visitors as well. We're also, we'll construct a donor recognition wall to give thanks to all that contributed. So our current partners are Alamosa County, City of Alamosa, I put you on there. I don't know if that was kosher or not, just because you did have the donation a few years ago. I'm also a member of the Alamosa National Daughters of the American Revolution. Janet and I are, we have access to grants. So we'll be able to help maybe with flagpole, about around 10 grand for flagpoles, maybe more. Also, the VFW has agreed to be part of that. Frank's been working with them to maybe get on their national cover magazine to get some exposure. So we do have some contact info. We are on Facebook under Alamosa Veterans Memorial Park. We currently have a GoFundMe going on, so that link is on there if you care to look at that, but there's some Melissa's information. We've had some really great articles written about Frank and his experiences and just the park in general. So those are all posted there. We do have an email address in our mail-in address. Let me see if I got everything. We're also asking for maybe your consideration for a letter of support as we move forward, asking for grants as well. But I will remind you, it isn't city limits, as you probably know. I have to tell you that. And I'd also like to thank Charlie Grigo for agreeing to be a member on the board as well. All right. Do you have anything else?
Thank you, Ms.
Questions?
Well, I'd like to, like to just kind of describe that this represents family and all branches of service. One time or another, you're asked to leave your home, your state, your country to go to foreign land. When I was drafted, they gave us 10 days to come and say our goodbyes. So I hope that Alamosa will be a major role player in this worthwhile project. And I thank you for having us here tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Before you leave, we'll have a few comments from council members, okay? Counselor Grigo.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
This, when we first started, it was Counselor Vio that was on this, and then because of the schedule, then I became part of the board, which is, you have a small group that have gone through a lot to put this thing together, that nonprofit deal, boy, that took a long time, you know? And I think that this is something that, if we get the right partnerships, everybody working together, it'll come up, you know, together, working together. So like I said, it's something that all veterans that are here, that pay their dues and are gone, I think this is some memorial, I think that is something that we all should support. And you said some kind of letter of support, or what is that, what is it you're asking for?
A what? A letter of support?
Yeah.
Oh, it could be something as general as, you know, you agree with a project, you think it'd be a benefit to the county and the city, and, you know.
And if that's the case, I think I recommend that we should do, put together some kind of letter of support for this kind of project, so.
Well, I also could see this thing evolve after the trails component. Just talking to some folks, a lot of veterans do seek out veteran memorials. And we have quite the variety here in the valley right now, so I could even see envision maybe some sort of little brochure, you know, just like we hand out at our visitor center to kind of map out where everything is. I mean, the one in Canas County is really cool. They made a boulevard, and you can plant a tree, and they have plaques. And you know, they want to Castilla County, of course, one, Mana Vista, and Crete even has a small one, little bronze boots and stuff in their city parks. So, yeah, I think that there's a lot of potential here. I think it's a huge benefit. I mean, we're just getting started, getting in front of folks, but with definitely all the court, the Rio Grande Water Conservation District, now how, definitely be getting in front of them just because I do see a lot of their employees just walking across their long airport road, you know, going for a, well, you know. So I think it just would be, even for the court people, let off a little steam or have a nice place to sit.
Sit around the bench.
Right?
You did a good job, Brenda.
All right.
Thank you guys. Thank you, Mayor.
Well, thank you for your time.
Counselor Carson?
Yeah, I just wanted to tell you in the midst of your rest of your board that, thank you. It is a beautiful project, and I agree with you. It could be part of something bigger as far as valleywide. I do really, really like the design. The statue's amazing. I mean, the whole, the whole design of the project is great, but I really think that that sends a whole different message, and it's great.
Yeah, it's a pretty powerful. The first time I saw it, I just cried.
It is very powerful. It's, I think, sometimes something that is missing a little bit from veterans memorials.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Carson. And I'll just wrap things up. Thank you also very much for all the work you put into this project, and we wish you much success.
All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Just getting started. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
I apologize for this. I just found out that apparently our outside funding partner, Alamosa Bicycle Coalition, swapped with the Veterans Coalition for tonight, and we weren't made aware, I wasn't made aware of that. So we do have the Veterans Coalition representative here, Richard Nagley, ready to do a presentation. So if we could go back to that, that would be appreciated.
Sure. Please come up here, Mr. Nagley. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, to council members, I'm Richard Nagley. I'm with the Veterans Coalition of the San Luis Valley. This is a veteran service organization that is serving veterans in the San Luis Valley, Colorado, and actually worldwide. We would like to thank the Alamosa community for the support over the last 13 years that the coalition has been in existence. What I typically do is ask, how many veterans do we have in the valley, or in the room at the moment? If you please raise your hand and keep them up. And now, how many are related to veterans? Please raise your hand. Thank you very much. Thank you for your service, veterans. Welcome home. Thank you for your family service. The last few years have been extremely difficult for everyone, especially nonprofit organizations that serve the community. Veterans have been hit especially hard since we have such few resources targeting veterans. Keeping the Veteran Coalition doors open has been a primary objective while serving veterans, and it hasn't been easy. Your support and assistance in helping us to do that has been extremely helpful and why we're still here. The Veterans Coalition grew out of about 13 years ago, when the VA couldn't have a, keep a doctor in Alamosa. Until then, veterans were traveling to Denver for simple procedures such as x-rays, CAT scans, ultrasounds, mammograms, patooters, et cetera, especially for older veterans that could take a lot of time and energy, and in the wintertime, it was very difficult. The Veteran Coalition worked, brought the VA's Eastern Colorado Healthcare Management to the valley and had them understand the burdens veterans were being put under. Working on behalf of veterans and with local elected officials to nationally elected officials, the VA made several changes and provided veterans a choice, seeing the VA and going to non-VA community providers. This was called the Fee-Based System. The VA was just creating the Choice Program in 2014, which was supposed to provide veterans with more options seeing non-VA providers. In 2018, the system changed to the Mission Act, because the law had, which was supposed to expand veterans' options, but it was too complex for the VA as well as our healthcare providers, let alone veterans themselves. San Luis Valley Health, Valleywide Health Systems, Rio Grande Hospital, Behavioral Health Group often would come to the coalition when they weren't getting paid or when veterans weren't getting their authorization. So it was another area that we, the coalition began to work with. On March 14th this year, the VA released the Asset and Infrastructure Review, called the Air Report, a long-range plan on what to do with the VA and its facilities that actually includes closing four of the five VA clinics in rural southern southeastern Colorado. That includes Salida, Arlington, Lamar, LaHunta. The only one that didn't get closed in the first, targeted for closing in the first round is Alamosa. We have become a thorn in the side of the VA in Washington, and we're not going to stop. When the coalition began in 2012, statistics the VA provided were that in the six counties of the San Luis Valley, there were 3,554 veterans. Some subset of that that were getting benefits brought $19,962,000 into the valley. In 2020, the last time this report was created, there were 2,986 veterans in the valley. We are passing away. But the total expenditures coming to those, to some subset, again, of those veterans, had increased to $39,649. That's an increase from $19,900,000 to $39,600,000. That's an increase from nineteen million nine hundred to thirty-nine million six hundred. That's because we had veterans applying for benefits, realizing that there were benefits for them to apply for, and working with county service officers were able to uh bring that uh to the to the valley. For Alamosa County, those numbers in twenty twelve were a thousand and thirteen veterans for six million thirty-three thousand to twenty twenty being eight hundred and ninety-nine veterans for twelve million twelve thousand. So again, a significant increase, and those are real dollars in veterans' pockets, and those are uh non-taxable dollars. Those are, they're they're not taxable. So uh we've tried to get information on individual communities such as Alamosa. Unfortunately, the VA doesn't break it down to that level. Working with DRG, I have also not been able to to get it down to that point. As I said, Alamosa is not targeted to be closed in the first round, but looking at the information that is available in the Air Report, uh I suspect like happened a few years ago in the base closures, Alamosa will get closed in the second round. The reason that there are so many more veterans receiving benefits is because the Coalition started doing marketing with veterans. Even though each county has their own county service officer, they never had time or or they didn't understand anything about the marketing uh component. We've had more veterans come in, we we direct veterans to their individual county uh veteran service officers, and that's why the percentage of the number of veterans that are in the valley uh getting benefits has actually increased. Again, as I say, we believe this is through direct marketing, and we can demonstrate that because of the forums, the meetings, uh participation with government bodies, referrals, dissemination of information, and just plain face-to-face uh communication that we've had with veterans when we see them. Unfortunately, we've not been able to obtain, as I say, the information from the VA on Alamosa or even Mon- or Montavista. It would be nice if the businesses could start trying to capture some of that information, economic development, uh and perhaps if the town of Alamosa were to ask either DRG, they could spend a little bit more time in that area or even approach the healthcare community, since that's where a lot of the veterans are. At present, we are seeing, the Coalition is seeing five to eight unique veterans a week. However, we have as many as fifteen to twenty-five encounters per veteran, per day, per week. It's more than a full-time job. This is being done with a staff of one, myself and an occasional board member. So um as you've heard, I don't get paid. I funded this organization to start it, so it just doesn't make any sense to pay myself out of my other pocket. The the support that you folks gave us this year actually kept us alive another month. So we we will be alive until the end of the year, but like every other business, and unlike every other business, we don't have a product to sell. Our services are free. The only way we can get funds uh from organizations is for programs. No one wants to help us keep the doors open. If we don't keep the doors open, there will be no programs. So uh with that, again, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to make the presentation. We have a lot more ideas for helping veterans uh committees that we have been asked to be on. Last week, I met with an undersecretary uh on Friday and the Friday before, a different undersecretary with the VA. So we have put the San Luis Valley on the map in Washington. They know their veterans here, working with Senator Hickenlooper, who had a five o'clock meeting. One of Mary was on that while I was on another board meeting with the research for the VA. We will do everything we can, and with the new county service officer for Alamosa County, I think we're starting to build a good team. Any questions?
Sure, thank thank you so very much for your presentation, and I'll see if any other council member, we have a councillor Daniel.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Richard, thank you so much, and and the presentation from earlier with the Memorial Committee. I am so humbled by the work that our veterans have to do for themselves and all of the work they do for each other, and I wish that there were more services and supports available for you. Working through my regular like day job, I know we serve a lot of veterans at Valleywide, and there's still challenges with the with those authorizations, and I know people are trying to to work through that. But is there anything that we can do, either as individual people or as potentially with the city, to talk, to advocate for not closing, not just our clinic, right, if that does happen in the in the phase two, but those other rural clinics? Like Los Angeles, La Junta, those are important places for people to go, and they they can't travel either. I mean, how are there ways we can do that, or who would we advocate with? Do you know?
Uh, the short answer is yes. The longer is, and and because Valleywide is out in that area, you have a vested interest there also. The commission that is, has been appointed by the president ha- is a nine-member commission. Eight have been appointed and have passed the US Senate, the ninth is waiting. Once the commission is in place, the document, the report itself, which is a multi-thousand-page document, will be uh reviewed by the committee to see if there, if the ch- if the information makes sense. The committee will then be going to the public for public comment, either as individuals, as organizations, as governmental bodies. Uh what we've been able to see so far of the report is the statistics are taken from twenty sixteen to twenty eighteen with a little bit of twenty nineteen, meaning pre-COVID. Uh the VA closed down clinics and everything, so the the numbers don't make sense. Any comments that will be made need to be made before January thirty-first of twenty twenty-three. That's when the committee has to submit its final report to the VA, to the president, and eventually to Congress. And like with the base closures, it's an up-down everything. Colorado Springs is going to have a new big hospital, probably bigger than the one that's in Rocky Mount in Aurora right now. It's gonna be in conjunction with DOD. So it's gonna be a full-fledged and and big, and then they're also gonna build another uh Taj Mahal in Castle Rock. So they're closing down rural clinics to get the FTEs and the dollars to put back into those more centralized locations. So as soon as that report, or as soon as the member is seated, and they will be looking for, I certainly hope people will speak up, the preliminary part of the information, they interviewed, I think it was three hundred and sixty-two veterans in Colorado total.
Okay, well, thank.
With the decisions.
Thank you, Richard, for for that work, and I also want to say thank you to our VSOs and all of the advocacy work they do that you do. We have case managers working in all of our social service agencies and things like that, trying to help veterans access the benefits that they have earned. Um and so I really appreciate all the collaboration and coordination that that takes.
We appreciate you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Daniel. Councillor Grigo?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank Richard for his commitment to help disabled veterans. Like he says, he's on the phone, he's he talks to a lot of people. He tries to keep this thing going and going, and your tiredness, it it's a tiredness thing, you know, and we were, the mayor and I, we went to that Veterans Healthcare Meeting and you know, if it wasn't for you, your leadership, and you know, to put this thing together and help these people, we probably would be closed down here. You know, and we 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 got a chat, I forget the gentleman's name that put the the meeting together, but he told us that we need to get the numbers up as far as, you know.
It's too late. It's too late to get the numbers up. That was Director Kilmer. He is the director of Eastern Colorado Healthcare. He is the most senior VA healthcare component. For those that aren't aware, the the VA is made up of three pieces, the healthcare, VHA, the benefits, VBA, and then the national cemetery. And unfortunately, VBA benefits doesn't talk to healthcare, healthcare doesn't talk to benefits. So uh we have veterans that go to the clinic here, I have hearing issues, the VA gives them hearing aids, but never says, oh, you were in armor when you were in the military, have you thought about filing for a benefit, for a benefit clinic? There there's no communication. So any veterans, uh we we need to be as veteran-friendly as we can. Bill Brown is still here, Frank being the former service officer. I I get to blame Frank, he was my mentor. I am now actually uh a nationally accredited veteran service officer with the American Legion. Unfortunately, I don't have the computer or the software yet, so I still have to work remotely. But we've actually put together a teleclaim process, a veteran can walk in. If bill's not available, we can connect them up with the regional office and and expedite things through that way, too, so.
But thank you, Richard, for all you do, and and he did say also to reach out to your elected officials. Even though they say something here, the ball in Washington is where it happens.
That's right.
So, you know, I, they might have gave you the impression that we're shut down, but I I think there's still a chance, Richard. At this, you know, if they shut down Alamosa, it's gonna be tough for a lot of veterans. And I can I can sympathize, you know, for the people that got shut down, with how they're trying to struggle and, you know, try to get to Colorado Springs and well, it's been a hardship just to get to Denver, you know? And that's why I think they're building that that the hospital in Colorado Springs, it's almost right in between where people from the valley can go there. But like I said, you know, thank you for all the that you do, and whatever we can do to help you too, I think we should step up and and help you.
Um, Mayor, um, I think Mary Cornum, I think she's also part of the Veterans Coalition?
Yes.
Maybe. Um, she's on Zoom raising her hand, so I don't know if she wants to speak or not.
Okay, all right, so we're letting, speaking then councillor Carson was about to say something too. Can you show or talk to her?
Can you hear me now?
Raise her hand?
Yeah, so she hasn't had raised, so I just unmuted her.
Okay.
Okay. So Mary, if you want to say anything?
I appreciate you giving me a minute. I've been working with, yes, sir.
Mary, if you would like to make any comments, now is the time to do so.
Can you hear me? I'm not muted. Hello, I'm not muted.
You're unmuted, Mary, but we can't hear anything from you.
Yeah, I'm not muted here. You have to unmute from your side.
Mary, you had your chance, it doesn't look like it's coming through.
What we'll do is we'll go ahead and go to councillor Carson, and if if for some reason we're able to hear her uh while he's talking or something, we'll we'll give her another shot. Wait, councillor Carson?
So I just want to say thank you for your service. It's amazing what you're doing, and you guys are doing a great job there, so you're helping a ton of people. I I have two questions for you. Um, how did they pick the veterans? You said they interviewed three hundred and sixty-some or eighty-some veterans. How did they pick those veterans? And geographically, where were they at? That's just a curiosity question, because that can have to do with with the picking of of the closure clinics. And secondly, are those base closures that you're talking about, are they imminent? Are they for sure gonna happen?
The supposedly, they sent out notifications to veteran organizations that they were going to be uh collecting data, and the company that the VA hired to do the research got responses. No one that I know, including the American Legion Department of Colorado, ever got any notification about it. Looking again in the uh the raw data that I was able to get about the report, it looks like it's all in the Denver-Aurora area, Cheyenne, that they interviewed for what is called Vison nineteen in Eastern Colorado Healthcare. So uh don't know how they got them and don't know who they are. Have requested from very high channels to get access to more of the raw data. Uh having been an auditor, they realized that if they give me that, they're probably really in trouble. But uh don't know. So, and I'm sorry, your second question was?
Well, um, they were kind of uh related. I just wanted to know if if the interviewing that they had done already kind of solidified the closures for sure, and I guess it seems like you guys won't know for sure until twenty Johnny, January twenty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Right. This this was something that that was written into the law, the Mission Act in twenty eighteen, which passed under President Bush's, President Trump's watch, and uh the committee was supposed to be seated the first of January in twenty twenty-one. Then it would have two years, you're just about two years to the January thirty-first of twenty-three to look at the data, to look at the recommendations that were presented by the the company to the secretary of the VA at that time. And then it would be turned over for public comment. Once there was public comment, if there was any fine tweaking needed to be done, the committee could choose to do it. But again, this is such a a large uh and complex organization. Chances are, they wouldn't have changed very much. At that point, then it would go back to the president, the president would give it a thumbs up or thumbs down, whoever the president was at at that time. And then it would be turned over to Congress. Congress, again, the House and the US House and Senate would give it a thumbs up, thumbs down, but it's a full all or nothing. And nobody wanted it to be nothing.
So there's still hope if we can press.
I think that, you know, as as a as a body, as individuals, as veterans, once the uh once the horse has left the barn and and we can get access to the committee with the public comment period, they have promised, the undersecretaries have promised me, again, because we've become a a real serious thorn, that they will let me, us know, let me know, so I can let, Mary and I can let the the valley, our community know, and and we already are working outside of the valley with other rural areas of Colorado. Part of Colorado actually has uh the southeast corner and the southwest corner have actually been put into the New Mexico Vison twenty-two area. And that means it's New Mexico, Arizona, and Southern California. So i- it's just absolutely insane. And Pagosa Springs and and Durango and those areas go to Albuquerque. They're not even in Colorado.
Yeah, thank you, thank you so very much. We appreciate it, and and thank you to all the veterans for your service. We really appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, and usually we recognize when we see elected official in the audience, and we have Commissioner Lasky in office, and we want to thank you for your service, Commissioner Lasky. Okay, alrighty. So next on the agenda, we have um Tree Board update.
All right, I'm back, and there's a, excuse me, a PowerPoint that'll be coming up in just a moment. And uh I can kind of, I can definitely relate with some of the veteran things, but I can I can say a uh story related that with with trees. I was going out to a site visit in the Fort Garland area a couple of years ago, and uh it was one of the first snow days of the year. And there was a gentleman in the truck who passed me and proceeded to flip his vehicle. And uh he was trying to get up to Colorado Springs for an appointment, and uh that, he was fine. Truck wasn't so good, his dog ran away, uh but he wouldn't have been in that situation if he could have had some of the more services down here. Okay, so just a quick uh update and review of some of the accomplishments that the Tree Board has done in the last year, and some of this will be a quick uh repeat for you guys. And some of this will be a quick, uh, repeat for you guys from previous years, but it's a good refresher for some of the audience as well. Uh, so this is the thirty-second year of being a Tree City USA. Uh, next, please. Uh, so this is kind of what the process looks like, as we go through certain steps throughout the year. And then Andy has to do the big part of inputting this into an online portal, like everything is done these days. And we get a final signature from the mayor on that in December, as well as the proclamation that he did today. All right, next, please. So just in reference, for the rest of the state of Colorado, is there's ninety-three other Tree City USAs. Plus or minus five each year, they haven't renewed. For example, Sawatch, uh, used to be the highest ranking, uh, Tree City USA community in the valley, but they have not reviewed, renewed for a few years. I believe that Alamosa is now the oldest Tree City USA in the San Luis Valley. Uh, most of these, as you can see, have, uh, less years of commitment than Alamosa does. Uh, but there's a, there's a few that have, have been around a little bit longer. All right, next, please. Uh, so the standards, once again, are having some sort of tree board or department. So that's once again, uh, we have a list further on, but, um, we have the Tree Board here in town. Uh, Tree Care Ordinance, uh, there's a few of them that cover that in Alamosa. Uh, spending, uh, at least two dollars per capita towards tree care expenses. So that's plantings, care, maintenance of the trees. And then, uh, having the Arbor Day, uh, observation and proclamations. We did the proclamation tonight. All right, next, please. So here we have the current Tree Board members, uh, most of which are in, uh, Ward Three. And then we also have some city staff on there as well. So I've said this other years, I would say, we're constantly looking for additional members in the Tree Board. We have one vacancy now, so if anybody in the audience is interested, feel free to, I don't know, reach out to you, Holly. Is that where the application goes through? And, uh, and then we'd be more than welcome to have you onboard to provide some input from, uh, a different perspective or a different area of the city. All right, next, please. Uh, so just some of the ordinances that we have, um, is we have one that establishes that Tree Board. Um, someone that has some maintenance standards for trees in town. Uh, some that talk about parking lots, and then some that talk about nuisances. So a whole variety of ordinances that cover just a gamut of different needs. And most of these have the basis of providing healthy trees or more trees, or making sure that they're maintained to provide the best benefit to the citizens. All right, next. So in regards to that, two dollars per capita spent. I mentioned how Andy has to go through this process of inputting the stuff every year. This is an extraction of the, the numbers he put into there. So this is what we can see was committed in twenty twenty-one towards trees. So we have, we more than fifty percent increased what we had to spend as a city, uh, to maintain that Tree City USA status. So that's something you guys should be proud of, is the extra effort and the funding you're able to provide towards these efforts. All right. So last year, we did not have to do the Arbor Day observance. But we did still do a planting project. So we did successfully apply for a grant in twenty twenty that we implemented in twenty twenty-one. It was planting four trees at four different trailheads around town here just to enhance the trailhead experience and, in the long run, provide some additional shade for the, the cars and people at the parking lot. So we can see over here at the, uh, at the, uh, North Pavilion on the left side, and then over at the, um, the Disc Golf Pavilion as well, just where we planted a few of those trees. All right, next, please. And then just some of the additional accomplishments. So besides those sixteen trees, there was, uh, thirty-three trees planted in total. Uh, we removed some trees, but we saw the net increase in trees in the city. So that's great. And, uh, a lot of maintenance pruning on the trees, that helps maintain the health and the vigor of the trees and the safety for the citizens. And then, uh, a good number of volunteer hours. So that's, uh, last year, that was mostly Tree Board hours. In other years, that also covers the hours of people spent, uh, helping on some of these planting projects. Okay, this year, we were also able to qualify for getting a growth award. So how that's set up nowadays with the Arbor Day Foundation is on a point scale. And so we were real good at being able to get that this year because of, we got eight points of the ten needed points by developing a program for planting trees with citizens. That Alamosa, the street, tree cost share program, and then us also applying for at least two grants gave us some additional points. We were able to, for getting those, uh, the growth awards. So just another bonus for how committed the city is towards our trees. And this is kind of a side note, little pet project of mine, but I, I took a class last year on, uh, iTree. It's kind of, it's this online program for, uh, where you can analyze and look at trees. And one of the things I did, I was like, well, I'm gonna do a project for Alamosa. So I put, what it does is it randomly drops points in the town. And then you can, so you can see kind of these red spots, and inside that red spot is a little plus. You indicate where that tree, that, that landed. So on trees, on sidewalks, dirt and things like that. Next slide, please. And what that does is that gives us a breakdown. We can give a percentage of how much of our area is covered by trees versus grass versus dirt, or whatever parameters have put into there. And so we can see looking through this, and it's in the notes portion, and it didn't, it's a screen snippet, didn't show up real well. Uh, but trees are.
Do you want me to tell you what it says?
Yes, please.
Trees are eight percent. Grass is twenty-two percent, brush is twelve percent. Impervious buildings, ten percent. Dirt, twenty-eight percent. Impervious roads slash parking lots, eighteen percent. Water, two percent. And then if I can get my mouse over here.
So some of the takeaways from that is, one, it's great we have that tree cost share program, because that will help us increase the amount of trees. And two is, we need to have any efforts we can, besides just trees, for having less exposed dirt around there for the fact of, as we're experiencing this last week and have been for the last month or so this year, the amount of blowing dirt that we have. So, uh, just encouraging good landscaping in town is, is a bonus besides just trees. All right, thank you. Next slide. All right, and so this brings us towards the end here. Is, uh, we will be doing a tree planting project this year. When I'm finished, I'll hand these out to you guys. It's open to the public, uh, once again this year. So May nineteenth at four thirty, uh, is we'll be planting some trees over the recycling center. This is a grant we applied for with the Colorado Tree Coalition and Excel Veg Management. So the focus had to be under or near power lines. Because of the power lines we have by the recycling center, we were able to get this grant at a seventy-five percent cost share. And so it's a matter of aesthetics, but also a matter of cutting down on some of that wind. And since the recycling center really is a showcase effort in location for the valley, is it just helps us show off some of the additional efforts that we as a, as a community are making. So I think it's gonna turn out to be a beautiful project. So, uh, if you have the opportunity, show up for the planting. And next, please. Uh, so once again, just congratulations on the efforts you've done over the years, and your support of the Tree Board, and your staff is, do associated efforts for, uh, keeping this effort going. Thanks.
Thank you, Adam. We'll, uh, turn it over to, uh, Counsel for comments. Counselor Veho.
Adam, you come up, you come up here every year, and you give us a great rundown of what we got going in the city as far as trees are concerned. And just thank you to you and your board for the tireless work that you give and, and keeping our city beautiful and, and all that stuff. So thank you very much.
Thank you for your support.
Counselor Hensley?
Um, obviously, I, I love being a part of this board. It's very rewarding. And Adam, I will say, one of the things is even here where you had the stats, and obviously trees weren't very high up as far as the percentages, and you really turned things around to being a positive. And how, and you look at things from a very optimistic view, which I think is really exciting in the sense of it gives us that idea, you're, you're, um, promoting something in a very positive way, and how, you look at the things that we do well. But obviously, there's much room for improvement, but you do it in a way that really encourages us to do that. So I just wanted to tell you, I appreciate that.
Thanks for noticing.
Hey, thank you, Counselor, uh, Counselor Daniels.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I am so impressed by the work that the Tree Board does every single year. Um, and just wanted to say thank you so much for this. I'm really hoping that I can make that May nineteenth planting. And so I think it is fun, where you all are so committed, you're so passionate about trees. And I really appreciate all the education and information you bring to our community to ensure that we have this valuable resource continue. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and Adam, uh, I learn something every time you come up here. So thank you so very much, and thank you for keeping our community informed. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thanks for all your efforts.
All right, you're welcome. Thank you. Okay, all right, Counsel. So we're back on track with all the presentations and outside of presentations, everybody, we're good.
In our second reading, I did not prepare a PowerPoint presentation this evening, because I think we've gone over it in some great detail. I did bring, uh, an illustrative map to discuss one of the most controversial changes that we might want to look at. It's the portion, it's going from industrial to commercial downtown. And then, um, we can discuss any of the other areas, but, you know, I think we've, we've done the joint work session with the Planning Commission in January. I think we went through all the zone changes at our last reading, um, at the end of April. And for the most part, like we've said before, almost all of these are housekeeping. So they, very, very few affect private property rights. Almost all of them help people do more with their properties. Um, many of them, people won't even notice a difference. Um, some of them, they will be delighted when they come in, and it's easier to pull a permit or start a business. So really, all of these serve the greater good. And then the three percent that do have the impact on private property rights, um, generally, i- it's not going to affect the use. They'll still be able to do whatever they're doing with their property, as long as they don't expand or enlarge it. So I don't know if Holly has the map I sent, maybe?
Are you talking about the same one you sent me?
Yeah.
I can put that up.
Okay. Um, and I, I just wanted to, we do have some members of the audience, and I've actually talked to almost all of the property owners in this area. And so sort of the story I told last time was that when we were doing the downtown plan, and we went downtown with the planners from, um, and now I can't remember the name of the company, MIG, um, them noticing that that was our river frontage right there, that we have a downtown that's right on the river. That's where the name of the downtown plan came from. It's downtown on the Rio because of that spot right there. And that's where they want our downtown to connect. And so in all of the past, in all of the cities across the globe, industrial districts were on the river, because that's how you move goods and services, and that's how you get rid of your toxic waste. So like, that's how rivers used to be used. But now we value our rivers and take care of our rivers, and we're good stewards of our rivers, and they're seen as amenities in our community. One of the things the planner said that's always stuck with me is cities pay millions of dollars to put in a lazy river, and you have one in your backyard that you don't do anything with. So part of why we're doing this is really to envision that change downtown, where we continue our commercial district that's all throughout our downtown, all the way to the river. Um, so this map is trying to show you that the businesses that are there, so this is Alpine Title, this is the Housing Coalition's office, this is, um, a storage yard that's there, this is Tim's Transmission. They're not changing. So nothing about their zoning or how they're classified changes at all. Um, the, the red that you see is what was operating as a junkyard, it's the closest one to the river. I don't think it's operating as a junkyard anymore, but that's why it shows red, because that's what it was most recently. And then the rest is Bill Clark, which we do have representatives from Bill Clark tonight, that I will probably speak to you. Um, I've met with them several times, talked with their attorney a little bit, and they're going to keep on being able to operate their business. And if you can tell sort of from the, the overlay of the photo, there's really not much room for them to expand if they wanted to. So we talked about if they change hands, if they sell, all of those things are not going to be affected by zoning. So there is that chance that I brought up last time, that when they go through the appraisal process, being nonconforming might be an issue to an appraiser. But other than that, the majority of people on this block are not affected by this change. Um, and Nino's actually benefits from it, because they're nonconforming and they're going to conform.
And I think Counsel's, while it's showing gray over the office, I think Counsel's received calls in the past about an interest in a bar opening again, but since it is set vacant, not in use, if it's not changed, it's not conforming. It would have, it would not fit in an industrial. So I would almost say that's a green from
Yeah.
what the previous use was, but since it's been sitting vacant, that's why it is gray.
And I did meet with the owner of that, of that building this week, and he's pretty open-minded about what it could be.
Is there any questions for staff before you open up the public hearing?
No, not at this time, but we'll go ahead and, uh, open up a public hearing, and then I'll come and bring it back to, uh, Counsel, and maybe they may have a question after that, we'll see. All right, so at this time, we'll open up the public hearing and second reading for ordinance number nine dash twenty twenty-two, and ordinance amending the zoning map of the city of Alamosa. We'll first start off with our, uh, live audience. If we have anyone who would like to make any comments in regards to, uh, this ordinance, please feel free to come up to the podium, uh, and, um, start making your comments. And then after that, we'll go to the Zoom, uh, participants to see if anybody on Zoom would like to make any comments.
Good evening. I wanted to just, um, I know there was the map up there, and appreciate that, uh, from Rachel, but, um, wanted to give you a, uh, picture of the property that I'm here to discuss. Um, um, nice to see everyone, the mayor and city councilmen and city councilwomen. Uh, honored to be here to talk to you guys tonight, uh, making a semi-annual appearance or so in front of you all. So I'm here to talk about the Bill Clark Truck Line Inc., which, as, uh, Rachel's map had shown, would have, it would be going from a conforming to a nonconforming use at this point. So I wanted to start by saying, um, growth is good and progression is good. I think any city should look to progress, um, in any way, shape, or form that they can. And that's a realization of my clients and a realization that I have as I come and talk to you. Uh, we're not, I'm not here to attack what the city's doing or to attack, uh, the great work that Miss Baird and other city planners and the city manager have worked on um, over the last several years to bring more commerce and community livelihood to our central business district here. Um, and this zoning plan change makes a lot of sense. There is absolutely every reason to get rid of the quirks that are in the code and fix some of these properties where their zoning does not make any sense. Um, however, there are certain businesses that are being affected, and my clients are one of those. Um, however, we're not necessarily here to object to the passing of this. I'm not here to make any legal arguments to you. Cities do have immense powers when it comes to zoning. Um, but I just wanted the Counsel to think about how this is going to affect my client's property. So as I said, I'm here for Bill Clark Truck Line. They're at three eleven Sixth Street. And to the west is a warehouse where they service and help maintain the seventeen, uh, or sorry, sixteen trucks, moving trucks that they are freightliner trucks that they use and operate with. To the east of that, you'll see that there is a gap where there is some potential for expansion, um, uh, in that, in that area. And then you will see that they have some docking bays attached to their main office. Um, so Bill Clark Truck Line is owned and operated by Leroy and Rosalie Martinez, their son Jeff Martinez, their daughter Marcy Schultz, and, uh, Matthew Flavin are the owners of this, uh, truck line. And they have owned this for approximately twenty years, maybe even a little bit longer. However, Bill Clark Truck Line Inc. has been in business since nineteen twenty-nine, and it's been a fixture of this community and provides many services. What they mostly do is provide freight services, not to just Alamosa, but in the entire San Luis Valley. There's other freight locations in Pueblo and Denver. And those freight locations contract with larger freight services, receive freight at that, and then deliver it directly down here to Alamosa and throughout the San Luis Valley. They deliver everything, um, and they also deliver out to Durango, um, as well. They, the freight includes machinery, food, beer. They, the freight includes machinery, food, beer, furniture, and basically anything that can fit in the truck. So they provide a very important and pertinent service to the valley. And because these are direct deliveries, they shorten and cut down on the time being in a rural area for your citizens here in Alamosa and the valley to get freight and other materials that may take much longer. So just some things that I would like the council to think about though, as it contemplates about passing this, is I do want the city to think about all the undeveloped property that does sit along Sixth Street. There are, there is quite a bit. There's the old Walsh, there's several other lots. There's lots to the south of Sixth Street that remain undeveloped. And so there's lots of area and a lot of that area is actually in what the city has zoned as the central business district, which is not technically what this zoning area will fix. But I do want the city to think that there is already largely undeveloped land and properties that could be used for commercial business, but have not been taken advantage of at this time. Secondly, it's my understanding that one of the attractive nature, and as Miss Baird said, is of being along the river. And it's understandable why that's that area could be attractive for it, for eateries or other types of businesses. However, you know, I would like the city to consider that there is the dyke that is there that would help, would sort of prevent being able to be right on the riverfront. And that is something that hopefully will have to remain there because if it does not remain there, then that means there's no water flowing down the Rio Grande River. And that is something that we have to be concerned about. Will there be water there in fifty, fifty years? This river is not necessarily a recreational river. It's not known for its fishing. It's not known for its rafting. And it doesn't have some of the qualities that like if you go to a steamboat, you do have sort of a different type of river with the Yampa there that is understandable why the city has built so many great locations across that. So I understand the attractiveness of that. But the Rio Grande is a river that provides, provides water to our farms. It provides water to other states and it even provides water for consumption and use to a whole nother country. So I just would like, when we're thinking about what would it really take to build something along that riverfront, it would probably take a high rise that has to look over that dyke. And what are the odds anytime soon that someone is willing to expend that type of money to build something like that? That's just the reality. Appreciate the dream and hopefully it's a dream that can come true one day. But that is sort of the reality of the situation. When you also look at just the way the streets are designed, they're designed, main streets designed to take you away from that area by doing a one way to the west. Sixth Street will take you into there, but you have to be traveling east in order to even know about this location in the city. Of course, the city can do certain things to bring attention to it and maybe redirect traffic in the future. Another consideration is that Alamosa is really growing to the west, where there's the Walmart, where there's the theater, where there's all those other businesses. That does seem to be the place where maybe a lot of commercial buildings are going to be planned. And I'd just like the the council to think about that. As far as my client have to think about their feasibility of this, it is not feasible for them to rebuild this entire company outside of where they have this property. And also they have to think about, is their property attractive to purchasers who would like to change this property to a commercial use and designation? The warehouse alone is not necessarily an attractive building. It is a building used for industrial purposes. So is that something that even if it was converted into commercial, would the city really want that type of warehouse used as a commercial warehouse? The other issues are the docking bays that are attached to the office. That would take significant remodeling on the exterior and interior to convert that space into commercial. Is it possible? Absolutely. Would it be feasible to a developer to come in? Probably not. Would probably look at having to destroy and condemn the entire properties and convert them to a different use. So my clients reasonably have some concern that if the Bill Clark Truck Line were to no longer cease and their heirs would like to do something else with this property or try to sell this property, it's going to be a little bit difficult to find someone who's willing to want to spend the money. And is that even economically safe for someone to want to spend the money in there? It's also a question on whether or not this change actually causes a depreciation in the market value of my client's property. I can't tell you that today and it would take some experts and some analysis to determine. There's no doubt that generally conforming something into a commercial business may bring differences in value. But my clients who have owned this property for over twenty years now are faced with the possibility that their market value will be much lower if they look to sell this. So those are just some things to think about. Miss Baird has been great and gave us her time and consideration. And we had a great conversation about what it would take to make that a nonconforming to a conforming use. Currently, it is considered a logistical issue because of the number of trucks and the noise that they can cause to go in and out of that situation. But we believe and we hope that if this is approved, that then we will work with the city and apply to go from a nonconforming to a conforming use and that there won't be any problems with that so that they can continue. As Miss Baird said, it is going to continue in its use, but we do want to be able to have the considerations for some expansion. And the reason for for that is because more and more and more and more people continue to purchase merchandise online. Particularly with this COVID epidemic that had occurred, they saw an increase in their business and it was the best way for many people to get items delivered to the valley. So there is a growing need for that as people continue to buy online. And that could cause the potential, likely potential, that there could be an expansion of their use and that freight is a valuable commodity and resource for the city of Alamosa to have for the use and benefit of its citizens. So I would just like the, you know, in the end, we're isolated from the I twenty five corridor. Rail doesn't seem to be quite, you know, what it used to in order to bring some of these items. And this is still a very much needed and useful service that Bill Clark Trucking provides to the city. So I'd just like the council to to consider those things. And if it approves it, then hopefully we can work with the city with the nonconforming to conforming use in order to continue to provide that service and if needed, expand that service to the citizens. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your comments. Hey, do we have anyone else in the audience who would like to make any comments at this time during the public hearing before we go to Zoom? Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm here as a member of our downtown advisory board. And so we spent a long time talking at our last meeting about this particular zoning change. I will say that many of the concerns that Mr. Keenholt brought up were also brought up by that group. We want to make sure that Bill Clark gets to continue operating in the way that it has, that there isn't any long term damage to Rosalie and Leroy and their heirs. And also with Tim's transmission, there was a lot of concern about those two properties. I feel like the city, and I think that the rest of the advisory board also feels like the city has done its best to try to make sure that there hasn't been any intention of harm to those groups. And I hope that they continue to work with them to make sure that there's a middle ground there. I also spent some time reviewing the downtown plan that was approved by the citizens. This recommendation goes back to that plan. And this is not the city coming up with new ideas. It's really the will of the citizens of Alamosa to make sure that we expand that downtown corridor. There's a lot of information in that downtown plan about something called trickle. I don't know what it is, like leakage business. It sounds really weird. But businesses that could be put in that then bring more money into our downtown economy. And many of those would be in this new zoning, in the in the mixed use zoning that was added to that area. I also wanted to say that the downtown advisory board brought up that it was super important, just like Mr. Keenholt brought up, that we also invest into those properties that are on Sixth Street, in that railroad area, in the Walsh area, to make sure that we're really taking advantage of all of those. I think there's lots of opportunity for growth and development. And generally, I just wanted to voice on behalf of the downtown advisory board that we're in full support of this zoning change and want to make sure also that our citizens and neighbors are taken care of in that process. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Okay, do we have anyone else in the audience who would like to make any comments at this time during this public hearing before I go to Zoom? Because after we go to Zoom, we'll bring it back to council. Okay, so I don't see anyone else coming up to the podium, so I'll bring it to go to Zoom. Ms. Martinez, if you can give instructions.
Sir, if you're on the Zoom app and you want to speak for this ordinance, just use the raise your hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're on a telephone, it'll be star night.
Okay, I don't see anyone on Zoom. Don't see any hands raised. So we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to council and staff for additional comments.
Mayor, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, so as Mr. Miltonberger indicated, and I know Rachel had shared this during her presentation, the downtown plan in and of itself, the signage that comes out of it is downtown on the Rio. And and that's how central getting this connectivity to the river was. But if we go back even further, when we did the update to the comprehensive plan, the number one goal from the community was to activate the river, which is what Andy has been spending a lot of his time from the boat ramps, the put-ins, the weekends on the Rio, and then the trail connectivity of going from the ranch down to the refuge, which would be right through this area as well. And so I think our opinion on what the river can be is a little different, but it's than Mr. Keenholt's. But it's also driven a lot from what we've heard from the community. Both through the comprehensive plan is the number one goal, even ahead of police. But also reinforced through all the public outreach that we did with the downtown plan. And so it's it's also not that crazy of a thought when you look at the development that's occurred in Salida and Buena Vista. And no, the city's not trying to copy them. But there's there's economic benefit to having those types of attractions with the downtown on on a river like that. And so I just wanted to make sure and point that out, Rachel. I didn't know if you had anything to add.
I mean, I I think that we've all watched the use of the river change over just the last five or six years. So I mean, if you had said eight years ago that I was going to see people out there with their floaties every single day sitting in my office, I would have laughed at you and I was like, no. But they are, they're out there, the river's changing, the use is changing. I hope we're not as far away from having, you know, buildings downtown that look over the river. I think that's relatively soon. I think that's why the city's trying to get ahead of it in this way. But the fact of the matter is this, it's not about how much commercial property is available downtown because there is commercial, there are commercial lots downtown. There's only one intersection with the river and this is it. This is our one downtown intersection with the Rio Grande. And either we protect it now or I get to be the planner that's back in front of you in a couple of years and I have a junkyard proposal or some other heavy industrial use. And as staff, I have to bring it all the way to council, even though none of us want a junkyard on the river. And that's all this really does. Doesn't affect anybody who's already in operation, but it will affect people that are trying to build industrial businesses in this location in the future.
Thank you, Ms. Baird. I see we have a councillor Hensley has our mic on and I'll bring it to you and then councillor Daniel.
So from a clarity standpoint, and I'm the worst when it comes to these little maps, do you mind bringing up the map that you had? Sorry, thank you. Okay, so the the red spot in the middle. So you have the green spot and then below it, you have the two red spots. It looks like the office is gray. So the red spot in the middle is that?
Bill Clark.
And what's the red spot next to it?
Also Bill Clark.
Okay. And so you made the comment and I just, I'm not trying, I just want to be, because the two things are different. You said here, there's really not much room for expansion. So on this one that was given to us, there does appear there can be some expansion. So so it could be there is some growth.
So they don't have any parking on site and they also have pretty much complete lot coverage with the buildings they have. So when you take into the parking needs, if they were to try to build more or take into account the fact that you can't do complete impervious surface, and I'm welcome, I'm happy to bring up my Code Expert because he's better at this than me. But theoretically, I mean, and we can do the calculations, but they actually don't have much room to expand. We let them park across the street on the railroad property. I think they've had an informal agreement with the railroad forever for it. But just like all the growing pains we're having with Fridays, when you expand, you have to find the parking, even if that means you buy a half million dollar lot from a railroad.
And that is something, not to change gears, but the office, even if this zoning changes, they are still going to have a hurdle with parking because they don't have any dedicated parking.
Okay, and then I'm just going to ask because, so I'm clear also. It was brought up, so obviously right now they would, at the way it is now, is conforming to nonconforming. Can you clarify that a bit again? And I know you explained it, but just what that means in the sense of potential options?
Absolutely. They're really can, every time I put them on a PowerPoint slide, I want, I want to be like kind of good to kind of less good. But it really doesn't mean anything except for if this was an industrially zoned lot and Bill Clark was brand new and came in tomorrow and wanted to locate here. If this was industrial, the answer is yes, go for it. You don't have to go before council, you don't have to go before planning commission, just go build. Now that they're nonconforming, nonconforming either means the answer is no. Or in some cases, it means you can go for like a special use where you'd have to go before a city council or and planning commission review. So really, that's what it means. It just means there are some impediments to development and and sometimes it means no. So if these were vacant lots and they were zoned commercial and Bill Clark tried to get zone or established, they started from scratch tomorrow, they'd come in to talk to planning staff and planning staff would say, that's just not allowed in that district. So that's how it would work if it was a new business.
So and that's if it's vacant, but since it currently has a business on there that's operating as industrial, it would, it'd be nonconforming, but as long as they continue that use, they can continue the use. They can sell it to someone else and continue that use, but they cannot expand is the sticking point.
Yes, which I I really do, I I'm kind of kicking myself that we didn't do the calculations, but I'd be very surprised if they could meet their parking requirements and be able to build any more buildings.
So just again, so if that's the big thing and you're feeling like they couldn't expand anyway, what other hindrance is there to keeping it then to say conforming?
So it's just not the way the code reads. So the code is just once we take and it's the heavy truck use of the property. That's really the part of it that's industrial. And so once the heavy truck use goes from being in an industrial district to a commercial district, that's just the category they fall in. But it really, and again, Carl spoke to the fact that we don't know what the appraisal would say. I mean, in a bustling downtown district, I don't know that a commercial district would be more valuable. I don't know, I'm not an appraiser. And it, I don't know. But that would be the only thing that I can think of realistically, that if they were to go to sell, the actual appraiser would call our office and say, hey, I'm looking at this. It looks like the zoning is commercial now, what does that mean? And all staff will say is it's it's a nonconforming use, but they're grandfathered in. They they have their right to operate their business and the city will never interfere with them. They just can't expand.
And and councillor Hensley, because I don't, I don't want anyone to get antsy since we've closed the the public hearing and we're having this kind of back and forth. So while they may not be able to build on that property and satisfy parking, who knows if they could work out a deal to purchase the property next to it, demolish it, do parking, like. So there's always potential ways of doing it, but the way Rachel's answering it is specific to them. So there's always potential ways of doing it, but the way Rachel's answering it is specific to them being able to fit it all on the property they currently own. So I just want to make sure that's clear.
Thank you.
And and just Carl did also talk about how we talked about there is a formal process in the code so that they can become conforming. So if they just feel uncomfortable with that non-conforming label, they can go through a process with city council to have that changed. There's a process. There's an off-ramp. I just didn't want the echo.
Okay, sorry, your mic on before councillor Gregor, but councillor Gregor, I'm going to come back to you here in a second too. Okay, but I did, go ahead.
Thank you. So I really appreciate both the feedback from Carl and Leroy and Rosalie, and and then also Rachel and Erin talking to us about about the concerns. I, so I do think this is the most contentious piece of the thing. So I just want to say for the rest of the plan, I really feel like you've done an excellent job. I really feel like we've had a lot of discussion about that, and that has gone very well. For this part of the plan, I do, like, I I can understand the concerns, and I believe we have the off-ramps. I believe we have the space and the place for people. And thinking fifteen, twenty years ahead, what we want this part of our town to look like, our city to look like, I think we need to make this change now to make that pathway, right? I think we have to have that possibility. And so I can appreciate the challenges currently, and I believe this is future focused, as we've been asked to be in our in our position. So I really, I am supportive of this zoning change, knowing that everything can stay as is for the people who are currently running that business. And if someone buys that business, it can stay the same. So if that was not the case, I don't think I would feel the same way. But because that is the case, I do feel the same way.
Thank you, councillor Daniel. Councillor Gregor, then councillor Carson.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of comments. A lot of work went into this thing, and I appreciate all the hard work. But the whole intent was to, I thought, was just to update zoning and not go after anybody that would create problems for a business. That's why I asked the city manager when I had a one-on-one, can they stay grandfathered in in their areas, you know, with, in this case? You know, there was no intent, and and if there's intent for us to go after a business that's been operating for almost a hundred years, and 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 change the dynamics on it, I I'm against this, you know. But I I, like I said, it it's something that you put a lot of work into it, and I appreciate what you've done, you know. You keep talking about this off-ramp, you know, and you talked about it on the first reading. And can they accomplish, and whoever is 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 in that area, could they accomplish by going off this off-ramp you talked about doing?
Yeah, and we're really, I I really can't stress enough that trucking businesses are important for communities. And Bill Clark is important for Alamosa. And we, I had that conversation with Leroy and Rosalie. So it's an important business and an institution. So we really, we have no intention of messing with an existing business. We really don't. If we, if this change hurt them in any real way, we would have pulled it as one of our proposals. So it really, it just affects their ability to expand within their current ownership footprint, which I don't think they've built any new buildings there. You'd probably remember better than I, but I don't, I think it's been at least twenty years since they built any new buildings. And I think that the space serves them well at this time. So it is absolutely not our intention to hurt them. I mean, it it's an important business for our community. The off-ramp, they have to jump through a couple hoops. And then when the appraiser calls us, if they've gone through this process, then we just say, oh, it's conforming. And and that's really, that's the only change. It's literally what staff says on the phone with an appraiser, and it's if they came in for a building permit for for another building. Those are really the only things, but everything else, nothing about their business will change because of this.
And Rachel, I don't want to put you too much on the hot seat to go through what the entire process is, but the end of that process is council would be making the decision on if they wanted to make it a conforming or not. So that would come back to council.
Yes, it's a council decision, and it goes to planning commission.
One more comment. I I did get a call from Mr. Trujillo, who owns that building there. And he had, what he had done, he said, was he was leasing that building with option to buy, to to sell it. And since then, the individual that was in that process has, I guess, given given him back the building. And so we did, we we did lose that building, and he just lost, he lost a lot of, he said he lost money in that transaction. There's been some talks with the neighbors there, as far as maybe some par parking possibilities to keep that where they would be operating. But right now, as it stands, he he's got an empty building there now. And the people that 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 were trying to buy it, I don't know how much, how many thousands of dollars they put into that building. And now they're basically giving it back to themselves.
Well, and so councillor Gregor, without this change, there was two hurdles. One, it wasn't going to fit the zoning to be a bar, because it had lapsed in its grandfathered status there. This change would have fixed that hurdle. The other is still then the parking, which, as you mentioned, maybe there were some creative ways for them to get around that. But this this zoning change does remove that first hurdle to where the historical use of how it's been would actually be conforming.
But I just, he just wanted me to, I thought he was going to be here this evening, but he did.
That's because he met with me. So he met with me on Monday, and we had a really good conversation. And he was under the impression that it had gone the other way. So he thought that because it was going from industrial to commercial, that he would lose his ability to do a bar. And we said, no, we talked to the person that was buying it from you, and we said, this is going to help you open a bar. We're going to, we're going through this process. We're trying to clean up the zoning. This is what we're going to propose to council. So it would have helped him. And I think by the time he and I were done talking, he felt good enough about it that he didn't need to come tonight.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome. Thank you, councillor Gregor. Councillor Carson?
I just have a curiosity question. So if they were to sell Bill Clark to just another buyer, and he wanted to continue the same sort of business logistics, there's nothing that changes. They can, they can still do that, right? As long as it stays in the same realm.
Where the office ran into trouble is they were not operating, I don't know what the limit is, but they were far beyond whatever the limit is. And and so they lost the grandfather status. So that's what happened. But if it's a continuous use, even if you sell it, you you keep that status.
Okay, do we have any other comments from council? Nope. All right. So anybody, no, no further comments. Ms. Barrett, thank you so very much for sharing this, and thank you so very much for the comments you made, also Mr. Kinghold. And Erin. Okay. Councillor Daniel, then councillor Avio.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we approve ordinance number nine, twenty twenty-two, amending the zoning map of the city of Alamosa.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion? If not, please start voting here, please. Okay, Ms. Martinez.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to the next item on the agenda, the first reading of ordinance number thirteen, twenty twenty-two, and ordinance amending the cooperation agreement between the city of Alamosa and the Alamosa Housing Authority to address housing authority retaining PELT payments.
Thank you, Mayor. As detailed in the council communication, the previous agreements we have in place with Alamosa Housing Authority and with state statute, they are required to provide their PELT funds, that's a pass-through from the federal government to the taxing entities. For the last several years, they had been requesting to not have to pass that along to the city. I think as we became more sophisticated with our housing knowledge, and and we developed our housing plan and had a better idea of what was going on, and growing our relationship with that board and and understanding what's going on there, and all of that, helps staff feel comfortable recommending tonight to council that we can be willing to recommend to council that we forego receiving those PELT funds as long as they're going to be used for something that's consistent with the housing plan. So it's not just an open-ended, you can keep the funds. We want to make sure it's still tied into the efforts and the priorities of that housing plan. And so the agreement tonight just modifies it to where saying they can keep it. And then every year, we would have a resolution where they are identifying what that project is going to be. So this year, it's approximately forty thousand that we would have estimated getting, and they would be dedicating that towards furnaces and water heaters, which there's a big part of our plan that talks about maintaining the existing housing stock and and trying to make sure that it's energy efficient and and keeping up with times. We anticipated that this is something we would be recommending to council, so we did not put in our budget that we were going to get these PELT funds. So this is, this is a budget-neutral item, because we did not include it in the budget. And so at this point, we're just looking, if you have any questions and approval, to allow us to move forward with this.
Thank you, Ms. Brooke. Councillor Gregor?
I I went through and looked at all the agreements we had, and some of the people that sat on council back in the sixties and seventies and stuff. But since the last agreement hasn't been updated since nineteen eighty-one, is that something we're going to have to update? Because back then, they were talking about a hundred and forty units, and today, the housing authority has a hundred and ninety-nine units. And that's something that, I don't know if if if, you know, for future councils, if if they have this discussion again with future councils, at least we have an updated agreement, you know, than nineteen eighty-one.
My understanding is those agreements got updated, so we had nineteen sixty, nineteen seventy-one, and then nineteen eighty-one, when they did additional phases and got additional federal funding for additional units. And so unless they did yet another additional phase and got additional funding, I don't think we'd need another agreement. But it, those agreements, to me, are very confusing. They're very jumbled. That's the records that the housing authority has. There may be some subsequent agreements that got lost in somebody's folder as well, but those are the ones that they could find and that that we in the city are aware of. I don't see a reason to do a new one unless there's some change in their situation.
Well, it, I read in nineteen, nineteen eighty-one, they had a hundred and forty units. I spoke to the director down there, and I asked him, when when did they, when did they add the other ones? The other ones were added in nineteen eighty-four. So in eighty-four, they should have made a different agreement, and it never was, so. And if that's what it takes is to add, to make the change agreement, well, somebody dropped the ball back then and then changed the agreement, because there was some some more units added.
Yeah, and there, those agreements relate primarily to how the housing authority functions with HUD. So I would be reluctant for the city to wade into that. If they if they want to think about how they and HUD get along and whether they need a new agreement, let's let them do that.
I just, I just saw that it it seemed like they were changing the agreements, and you know, these are out, kind of updated, so. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Gregor. Councillor Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor. So since I have been the liaison for the housing authority, this has come up in the conversations. And so it's been, and I, before I was there as well. So it's been a few years that they've been really trying to kind of understand this. And I really appreciated the city attorney and staff figuring out, yes, this is in statute. Yes, it comes back to us. So there was a lot of, I think, misunderstanding to start with about how this happened and where it came from. That has since been cleared up, which I think is part of, like, a really good partnership with the housing authority. The second piece is, I do think that they are doing some excellent work as the housing authority, that we're still working on, like, philosophical things with housing and the plans and things like that. But the work that they do for their community members on their properties is impressive. And I think that this is giving them the flexibility, in some ways, to have these funds back after they have asked for them, not back, but like, keeping them, I guess, and doing something that aligns with what the city is doing. And so I really think this is a super positive step in the right direction with the housing authority.
Okay, all right, councillor Gregor.
One more comment from me. I too, I'd like to thank the city for doing this. This is one of the original affordable housing units that came into the to the city of Alamosa back then. And since we're talking about affordable housing today, this is kind of like the the foundation that helped, you know. So the forty thousand that's going back that helped to help them out, that's great, you know, then. You know, the more we can help out, that better ourselves for housing and stuff. So I I want to thank the city for, for looking at that and making that decision.
Thank you, councillor Gregor. Councillor Daniel?
I had an additional question. Every year, we will have to approve their project, correct?
They might pick different projects, so that way, we're still having staff take a look at their overall budget. Does their project fit in with that? Does it make sense? And then we just bring it as a resolution.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, councillor Avio.
Mayor, I move that we approve the ordinance on first reading and set it for a public hearing on May eighteen, twenty twenty-two. Ordinance number thirteen dash twenty twenty-two.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion down there? No? Okay, all right. Start voting. Okay.
The motion carried unanimously.
All right, thank you. Okay, that brings us to the next item on the agenda is the levy update.
This is everybody's favorite topic. I have a PowerPoint. So we're going to keep it short and sweet, also because, you know. Anyway, so the roadmap to certification is kind of the final report that was delivered to us by our consultant Woods in spring of twenty twenty-one. And so the next slide goes over sort of our path to this point. I understand that really the path to this point is like twenty years longer than this. But in terms of our current effort to recertify Alamosa's levy, this is where we're at right now. So in twenty eighteen, did the initial walk with the new consultants. They started doing the review work and their assessment. They did their geotechnical work in twenty eighteen. They spent all of nineteen and all of twenty doing hydrology and modeling. And then twenty twenty, they did certification overview, which is all the things that we would need to meet FEMA's or standards for certification for our levy. And then there was a meeting with staff, which actually included the county, so I was at that meeting. They did submit a conditional letter, letter of map revision to FEMA in April of twenty twenty-one. And we can explain that a little bit further, but it's one of the formal things we need from FEMA in order to recertify our levies, and also to deviate slightly from what the standards are for levy certification. The final deliverables were given to us last spring and May. I gave a presentation to the Board of County Commissioners in August of twenty twenty-one. I'd been talking to them about it when I was a staff person at the county about their contribution and how important their part of this project is. But it was sort of me presenting from the city perspective, this is, these are our next steps, and then coordinating with the person that replaced me at land use, Richard Hubler, and he's been part of every conversation we've had since. We met with the Colorado Water Conservation Board in February, and also our consultants sort of clarified some of the next steps. And then just this last last month, the Army Corps of Engineers came to Alamosa from Albuquerque, and we spent half a day walking the levies with them and discussing the project. Kevin Huck, who's the division engineer for CWCB, was here. And he, so he's actually the boss of the boss of the people that we usually work with at CWCB. So it was really cool that he came down here and met with the Army Corps with us, and we had some really good conversations. The San Luis Valley Water Conservancy District was part of the meeting, because she's actually, or Heather's actually on the CWCB board. We had the Public Works Director. We had the Rio Grande Headwaters Restoration Project representatives there, because they'll play a part in this. So it was a really great group of people, and we had a really good talk. And we learned some crazy things. There's like a drain on the river in East Alamosa we never knew about, so it was cool. Next, please. Okay, so usually what FEMA requires is that you have three foot of freeboard for the hundred-year event, right? And so if you look at our levy, so the part on your left, which is called the right levy, which is weird, but it's left if you look at it straight on, that's ours. And then the part to the east is the county's portion. And so if you're, if FEMA were to tell us that we have to take the entire levy up to three feet, that's how much levy we'd have to build. So everywhere that's red, we'd have to build. It's a crazy amount of dirt. And so we went to FEMA, and we Um and so we went to FEMA and we asked for that conditional letter of map revision with Woods to ask, hey, you know, our our hydrology is so different than it was a couple hundred years ago. The river doesn't flood or flow the way that it used to. What if we did two feet of freeboard? And when you think about how much material goes into three foot of freeboard, which is literally like building up three feet tall in dirt versus two feet along the entire stretch of our riverbanks, it's a considerable amount of savings. So we did go to FEMA. FEMA gave us some sort of conditional approval. And then part of that conditional approval was based on all of the hydrologic modeling that Woods did for us, which you'll see in the next slide. So basically, as it exists right now, if we were to have a hundred year flood event, which this is just hypothetical, this shows it breaching in different places. There's no way for us to know where it would really breach. But this is what would flood. So it's a good portion of the city and it's all of East Alamosa. So it would be catastrophic. Um and so next, um this is what FEMA has at least preliminarily approved for us. So everywhere that it is, that it is the green, which is in a lot of places, but in some places, we have more than three feet of freeboard. We are good. We don't need to touch it. Everywhere that's blue, we have more than two feet of freeboard. So if FEMA accepts this alternate standard for us, we are good in all the places that are blue. And then the red areas, that's that's less. Those are where we have to build. But it does take us from going rebuilding both sides of the levy to building mostly the portion on the ranch. And one of the things that we learned from the Army Corps recently, which we're not even a hundred percent percent sure that Woods knew, is that when the Army Corps designed this in the eighties, they designed the the bank that or the the levy that protects East Alamosa, they designed it to fail. Because there are fewer people in East Alamosa. And so basically, we would sacrifice East Alamosa to save the city. And that was a decision they made in the eighties. And we've talked with the county and worked with the county and everybody's on board with, we're gonna build this levy right this time and we're gonna protect everybody. So that's the goal. Um it might make it more expensive, but you know, things are a little bit more evolved in twenty twenty two. So I don't, I think we're almost out of slides. This is kind of the part that's changing a little bit. So this project has changed hands quite a few times. Everybody everybody's worked on the levy at one point or another. Um it's a huge project. I I don't think that any of us really um I literally had an email from Kevin, the boss of the boss at CWCB today, call it insurmountable. But not, don't worry, it's not insurmountable, just seems that way. But we are um we're like it's step three in this process, which means we're coordinating with the Army Corps and FEMA and our engineers. But I do think we are probably several years away from engineering. You have to work with the Corps at least on some parts of it. I know that we've gotten some conflicting information about that in the past, but it does look like the Co- Corps is gonna be part of this process. But unlike the past, the Army Corps seems to be a much more engaged partner, a much more excited partner. I think that we had an adversarial relationship with them in the past with the city. And now they're just like, hey, we have to go educate our people. We have to fix this levy. Let's work together. So I think that's really promising. Um I think some of our funding resources are really gonna materialize if we're working with the Army Corps and working through this stuff with FEMA. It's just, we probably won't be starting construction next year. But we're making good progress and we're talking to all the people that certify our levies. So as long as you keep on working for it, you're never gonna get your levy decertified. It's just you have to keep going through the process. So.
Good presentation. Thank you very much, Ms. Barrett. Okay, uh any comments, Council? Okay, so. Yeah, go ahead, uh Council Gregor.
Since I've been here a hundred years, under your footprint.
Since the levy.
We bought the ranch initially because of that dirt work. The ranch that we had, and that helped. And we had our levy certified. They had that big flood in Orleans. The Corps of Engineers were were out of Albuquerque, changed, and they came down and they 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 said we weren't certified anymore. And at that time, we had, we had something like almost two hundred fifty thousand dollars involved in it. And we never got that money back. So I don't know. And I don't wanna go back there because there was some debate back and forth and with some fighting and stuff. And but it's good to hear that. We now we get some people that are talking to each other and and listening and trying to train their own people as far as, you know, what's going on. So this thing has been going on for a while, for a long, long time, so.
Thank you, Council Gregor. Thank you, Ms. Barrett. Okay. So we'll go ahead and move on down the agenda to the next item under police, public hearing and second reading for ordinance number twelve dash twenty twenty two and ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Alamosa Sheriff's Office for mutual assistance.
As mayor, City Council, so the purpose of the purpose of this MOU is to outline assistance each agency will provide. When requested in the event that a requesting agency determines that a law enforcement situation or other emergency such as a fire, that requires more law enforcement resources than that requesting agency can provide. So this MOU MOU will formalize the relationship between agencies. The Alamosa Police Department and the Alamosa Sheriff's Office in order to maximize inter-agency cooperation. Any questions?
Uh no questions, but what we'll do is we'll go ahead and um public, um up, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing um to the public. We go ahead and open up the public hearing for the second reading of ordinance number twelve dash twenty twenty two and ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement with Alamosa Sheriff's Office and mutual assistance. So at this time, the public hearing is open. If anyone's in the audience would like to come up to the podium, please feel free to do so at this time and uh make any comments that you may have. Okay, I don't see anyone in the audience who would like to come up to the podium, so we'll go ahead and uh go to Zoom to see if there's any participants on Zoom who would like to uh make any comments in this public hearing. If so, uh hit the raise your hand feature so we can recognize you. I don't see any participants on Zoom, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and turn it back over to Council. And I see I have two mics lit. I don't remember which turn them on first, so Counselor Carson and then Counselor Veal.
I was just gonna make a motion.
Fire away.
I recommend that we approve ordinance twelve dash twenty twenty two on second reading.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Nope, okay. Please start voting. Ms. Martinez?
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chief. Okay, that brings us up to the next item uh on the agenda under City Manager. Legal, public hearing and second reading of ordinance number ten twenty twenty two and ordinance approving Colorado Region Eighteen Opiate Intergovernmental Agreement.
Thank you, Mayor. In twenty twenty one, City Council approved the agreements with um the Attorney General's Office on how we were gonna settle our lawsuit that we would go in with the state. And then the Attorney General laid out at that point the different regions and how much funding they anticipated to go to the different regions. And so this is the second reading on an IGA for the how our region here in the San Luis Valley, what the structure is gonna be. Um who's on it, who's voting members, who's not, what it means to be the fiscal person um and all of that. So it's just the the bones of that organization that we are a member of. And so with that, I can answer any questions.
Okay, um we'll go ahead and uh open up the public hearing for uh the second reading of ordinance number ten twenty twenty two and ordinance approving the Colorado Regional Eighteen Opiate Intergovernmental Agreement. Uh is there anyone in the audience who would like to make any comments at this time? Please feel free to come up to the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Uh so I get the good fortune of serving both on our San Luis Valley uh opioid abatement team uh and on the statewide team. I just wanna really celebrate uh this municipality and all the other municipalities that are deciding to pool those resources for collective impact. I think uh one of the phrases that we've used at our work at the Boys and Girls Club is we're all better when we're all better. And this kind of agreement really uh i- it illustrates that approach. So thank you very much for your work on this.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Okay, do we have anyone else in the audience who would like to come and make any comments at this time before we go to the Zoom? Okay, don't see anyone coming to the podium, so we will now go to uh Zoom. If you're on Zoom, please raise your hand by hitting the raise your hand feature and we will recognize you and allow you to make a comment at this time. Okay, I don't see any hands raised, so I will close this uh public hearing and bring it back to Council. Council Veal?
Mayor, uh I'm gonna make a motion here, but I wanna uh acknowledge Commissioner Lasky's work on this. Uh Commissioner, I know you did a lot of work getting all these groups together and people from all over the valley, so thank you very much for spearheading that. With that, I move that we approve ordinance number ten dash twenty twenty two, authorizing the city manager to sign the Colorado H- Colorado Region Eighteen Opioid IGA.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I too would like to thank you, Commissioner Lasky as well. Thank you. Please start voting.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, great, thank you. That brings us to the next item on the agenda, public hearing and second reading for ordinance number eleven dash twenty twenty two and ordinance approving a memorandum of understanding with Alamosa School District regarding interoperable communications. Interoperable communication, sorry.
This was a fairly straightforward one for us. It's just indicating that we are okay if dispatch gives them access to a channel and that we will work with them as appropriate during an emergency situation. So not much controversial controversy there.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Brooks. We'll go ahead and open up the public hearing uh in second reading for ordinance number eleven dash twenty twenty two and ordinance approving a memorandum of understanding with Alamosa School District regarding interoperable communications. So anyone in the audience who would like to make any uh comments at this time, please feel free to come up to the podium. Okay, I don't see anyone in the audience coming up to the podium, so I'll go ahead and go to Zoom. If you're on Zoom and you would like to communicate in this public hearing, please uh raise your hand by hitting the raise your hand feature at this time. Okay, I don't see any hands raised, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to Council. Uh once again, two mics are lit. I have Council Gregor and Council Veal. I'll let you all choose who's.
I'll I'll go first. I move that we approve ordinance number eleven dash twenty twenty two.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, please start voting. Ms. Martinez?
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, good. All right, man, we made it through all those. Okay, now we're up for the update on the recall efforts for the district attorney.
Thank you, Mayor.
Welcome.
Looking this afternoon at the number of signatures we've received, um now that we are two weeks um last two Wednesdays ago is when we started in the afternoon able to get the petitions out. So two weeks into it, we are at two thousand one hundred and fourteen signatures. As a reminder, our goal is six thousand because we need four thousand of those to be legitimate. Um we have spent just a little bit over three thousand, um but that is without Desiree putting her time for the last week, um which it has been significant keeping track of the petitions and explaining the rules and and all of that. So um that will be going up. We um are coordinating a mayor's round table with the law enforcement in the valley to learn more. Um not, we we're getting a good handle on what the impact has been here in Alamosa, but we wanna have a better understanding from across the valley. Cuz we know there has been some significant impacts. And so we will be having a round table to learn more from those law enforcement leaders. I wanna share that the chief and I will be downtown on Friday night to collect signatures. And yes, we will be publicizing that. And the chief will also be at North River Greenhouse on Saturday. Um the mayor, I believe, was at Safeway and has been walking the neighborhoods as well as some of us as well um in order to get those two thousand signatures. I do wanna assure you as well, though, that we do have a significant amount of petitions in the other counties with volunteers bringing in um those signatures as well. So it's not just in Alamosa. Um but it is something that if we wanna meet our abbreviated timeline, um we have technically until June seventeenth, but we wanna try to get it done by May twenty third. We do need to step it up a little bit, but we're not, we're not far off. So we're hoping for some really big weekends and and some volunteers. If everyone that had a petition out got all eighty signatures, we would be at approximately eight thousand. So um it's a matter of getting those signatures. And so the the more help we can get, the better. And that's all I have from an update.
Okay, thank you so very much, Ms. Brooks. Uh I believe Council Gregor have a comment?
I had a question. When we approved this ten thousand, I was under the impression that the money was gonna go to a a group that was doing the recall. Is the city doing the recall? Uh are we using City Hall as 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 the area where where the recall is? And then I I see planners that have recall uh signs in them. So are we allowing that too? You know, I I think that's that's uh we've never allowed any kind of uh candidates or anything to use city property to to put those planners and put those uh those uh billboards in there. So I I I s- I don't understand. I I just, I thought it was just huge ten thousand. We're gonna use staff time. You know, and you would you would deduct whatever staff time it was, uh I guess the ten thousand. But it seems like we're running everything out of City Hall. Is that the way it was? If if that's the way, I I misunderstood the way uh the thing was put together then.
Well, so I I think there was some confusion. And so the ten thousand was to to put towards the efforts. It would count for staff time or any other expenses we might have. Um we are listed as handling the petition process because when you work with the Secretary of State, you need to register. You need to have who the person's gonna be. We've been using staff time to know what the process is, make sure we're following all the legal requirements, all of that kind of stuff. Um we have used city property in the past to put up election items specifically for the Street Trust Fund, which is actually very similar. Um that's the same situation where council said we need to get this passed and we're gonna put effort up to ten thousand. And so we did have Street Trust Fund signs in our parks and on city property and used City Hall and put out things in the utility bills and and all of that. So it's very similar to the direction that was given for that, as has been given by council for this recall process.
I don't remember reading that part, you know, where we were gonna use it that way. You know, and I did, correct me if I'm wrong, you know, it's so many guys here. I I might uh the way it was interpreted was just the the monies would go to this, there's a certain group that's gonna recall this this individual. And we were gonna help with staff and whatever, you know, so I I'm.
Thank you, Council Gregor. Council Daniel?
So I I I just wanna say, Council Gregor, I did not have that perception that you are saying. I totally thought this is how we were going to do it. We would be using staff time. We would be pulling things together and not just giving another entity funds. So when we had all of the big discussions about how the DA was impacting and when we talked about the excuse me if I have been wording wrong, the resolution that we made. When we talked about the resolution and how things like this have to reach the level that they're impacting city operations that the we wouldn't do this lightly and we aren't going to do this in the future, to me, that showed us that yes, we are going to put time and energy up to ten thousand dollars, right? We don't wanna go over ten thousand. We don't wanna, we don't want to do that, but that that was going to be, this is our commitment because this is such an um important issue to our entire San Luis Valley, not just Alamosa. And so I think um I I I am comfortable with the things that have been happening. I hear that you, I hear that you're not. Um but I I feel like this is well within the realm of what I understood from the communication we had received.
Thank you, Council Daniel, Council Veal, and Council Gregor.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess my question is, where where are the other communities at? I I know there's letters and and that kind of stuff. But do do we know of of other mayors and other city councillors and other county commissioners going out and and actively working on this and not just doing a letter?
So we have some of the law enforcement chiefs and and sheriffs who have picked up um petitions, but not necessarily all of them. Um on a Vista's letter. but not necessarily all of them. Um on a Vista's letter indicated that they would be willing to be a site to sign petitions similar to the City Hall. Um I think they're a little preoccupied with the fire right now, so we haven't really pushed on that. Um I think there's probably elected officials in other communities who have are circulating the petitions, but obviously not any other communities that are on the the forefront of this. I think there's different attorneys that have concerns on how much resources they can spend specifically. Um and so that's that's dampening some of that action.
Thank you, councillor Grego.
One more question. How are you keeping track of staff time? You know, cause your staff, you mean your, some of your department heads are are taking petitions, right? And so sending them up. How do you keep track of that? Is that part of the three thousand or?
Yeah, that's part of the three thousand. We've got this great worksheet, and so we're, we've got our hourly wages and we're tracking now. Um if you look at, if I go to a meeting that I'm gonna be at no matter what and people sign it, then we're not tracking that because I'd be at that meeting anyways. Um but if you look at Desiree tracking her time, when she's checking out petitions, she's not doing anything else. So she's very much doing that. When Jasmine is creating the flyer, that's time she's not doing, so she's tracking that. Um when I'm creating, um you know, what some of the language is going to be, then obviously that's getting tracked from my time. When Eric had to draft the language that was gonna go as the official on the petition, that time was tracked. And so um I will tell you, though, like when I spent my Saturday and Sunday going door to door, that was my personal time. When the chief's sitting out at Loaf and Jug or at N R G, that's his personal time. So we're not tracking that because he's not on the clock. Although a salary, we're not, I don't, you can argue, are we ever off the clock, but um that's how we're we're tracking it. We've got a great worksheet. We've got our hourlies and everyone's reporting their time.
Thank you.
Any other questions of Ms. Brooks? Thank you so much for the update and thank you to to you and all of the volunteers and everyone who's uh putting in the hard work to bring about the meaningful change that we wanna see in our community. Thank you. Okay, all right. That brings us to um the next item on the agenda is committee reports. Have any committee reports? Councillor Daniel?
Thank you, mayor. The homeless coalition met recently. I have to keep looking at my calendar. Where did I go this last, you know, last two weeks? Um but the homeless coalition met. It was actually a really fruitful conversation, I believe, about um our healthcare and how um our healthcare organizations serve people who are homeless and serve and how we communicate and how we help support that. So it was, we are in the process of really looking at the gaps with the resources we have and trying to figure out where where those gaps are and if there are ways to fill those gaps or how how those can be filled by either other organizations or if it is completely a need that has no, currently no scaffolding whatsoever. And so I think that the conversations are good. I think the coalition is actually really starting to gel and they're bringing up important issues. Um there was something that was brought to my attention um that I I forgot to bring up in the last meeting, which is why I'm bringing it up now, so I apologize, um about our monolingual Spanish-speaking population who may be homeless and how we're ensuring that they get the support and that um the Immigrant Resource Center, we talk about them a little bit, but how how connected are we to them with that coalition? And so um I forgot to mention that at the last time, and since it was on my mind, I didn't wanna forget to have that on the record. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Daniel. Councillor Grego?
I would along that line, I was gonna ask uh Heather uh when we, this meeting is a public meeting, correct? This coalition meeting that we have.
It is, um and we go by an agenda, and since it's been mostly working, we don't have on the agenda um an area where we have public comment, but it is open to the public. And we've had visitors at a few different meetings just sit in and listen.
Okay, and that's what I was gonna ask is, we've had some visitors there, so they can't really uh participate.
No, they're not on the committee. Just like you don't have people participating with you guys right now.
Okay, and even in the beginning of the meeting, you don't have a a period for for public uh comment?
Not until we get to the point where they're past brainstorming on gaps and all of that.
Cause I saw there was five people there, and I don't know if they if they spoke or what they did. Last, I've seen them in in the past where there's people in the audience and stuff, so I I was just curious how how that worked, so.
Councillor Carson?
Um to kind of tag along with Charlie just asked, so we're going on four years now with the homeless coalition or three? Four with cope with the pandemic?
I'd have to look. The pandemic just creates a, is it three years?
Yeah, um so I I guess three years down the road now, and I understand that that there isn't uh a public comment, but I I think maybe the homeless coalition should consider adding an agenda item or uh a way for someone to submit a card to be added to the agenda, cause I've had the same questions and comments from people who've wanted to give input or speak, and they feel it's a very closed group, cause they can't, they have no input, and they think they have some good ideas. So I think it'd probably be, I mean, we're talking three years now, and I'm glad that they're starting to gel, but uh maybe the public, maybe people, if they can get on that agenda or or be allowed to speak and have some good productive input. Um so I I think it's worth considering. I would just put that out there because uh you know, if you're gonna take the time to go to this meeting even several months in a row and never get an opportunity to speak, I think that kinda makes it feel a little bit um almost elitist, closed off, you know, and I think after three years, we should be to the point where we should at least start taking some public input there, especially knowing that we don't have a uh near homeless rep, you know.
We do. Yeah.
And and that person was, never mind, I'll I'll ask that question later, but I I just would like to suggest that maybe you guys start allowing some public.
We can, we can add a three-minute little public input. Um it'd be helpful. I know Ms. Brown doesn't like talking to me, but um for us to be able to explain where the committee's actually at and what they're focused on because I have a feeling a lot of what they may have to say has nothing to do with what the committee's actually doing. But they can obviously make their comments, and then the committee can tell them that as well.
I might have not been clear. I don't suggest that. That's not what I'm suggesting. I'm suggesting something more organized. I'm not talking drop in, be able to make public comment. I mean, can?
I mean, I will add on the agenda. So for other committees, like our rec board, we have on there, similar to what we have here, a section on the agenda for public comment. Since the committee has been a working on brainstorming, they're not making decisions, they're not doing anything like that. That's why we haven't had the the public comment. So we can just add that to the agenda and they can make a three-minute public comment.
Well, my point would be to maybe use some of that information if you, I guess, I think it would be productive to allow a submission of a comment or an agenda item to get people on that agenda or in that meeting instead of just a three-minute blurb or, you know what I mean, something that's more organized. Instead of them just dropping in and making three minutes of comments or whatever. And that could mean the board even approving that item for the next meeting. I'm not talking at that meeting, but something so that they can show up, prepare to make that comment or that presentation. Cause that's been more what I've been asked is, they didn't just wanna make, you know, a three-minute rant about what's going on and what's not going on. Something more organized that they could submit and be part of that agenda.
So again, there's this lovely staff that they could work with behind the scenes, see what's going on, see if it even makes sense to go to the homeless coalition. Um and we've been taking up more than an hour and trying to get through this type of situation. So we can ask the homeless coalition, but some people may have certain expectations that aren't being met, but it would be helpful if they would talk to staff.
Thank you.
And I think. Sorry, I'm sorry, mayor. I apologize for jumping in. Um I do, I'm sorry. Um I also think it could happen the way that it happened with me, so I'm not the one who thought of the monolingual Spanish-speaking issue. There were people who were in the audience coming to the meeting, uh having these questions asked and met with me afterward as a representative on that coalition to say, have you all thought about this? Maybe this is something that we need to talk about. And so every person on that committee can also be talked to that way. Um and I think that that is then how then we can work with Heather to say, is this something we should bring to the coalition and have that teamwork on it? Um because I think if we can, if, I think we have to be thoughtful and intentional about what gets on those agendas. And so working with staff and working with things like, otherwise, we will lose. So we do have a focus. We are moving toward a goal. Yes, it is going slowly, not like, it's not magical. Um but I do, I do think we have to be really conscientious about how those things happen. And if people have great ideas and they come to staff, they can have an outside of the meeting, right? Like, there are things that that coalition doesn't need to tackle that staff could tackle as part of the plans we already have in place. And so I think, I think it's a both and, right? I think we need to have these conversations. I think people can talk to anyone on that, on any of our committees, truthfully, like like they talk to us outside of meetings, right? And so I think that those are the opportunities people have to let the coalition do the work it needs to do. And so I think it's a, how do we do that and engage more people with it and be open to those things, but recognize that that meeting is a working meeting and that team is responsible for doing that work.
Councillor Carson?
I understand that, but it is a working meeting, work session, work type meeting. So maybe then, I guess, if if that's the roundabout way comments are gonna get submitted, maybe then that isn't the right way because that's the feeling that people are having. They're getting kinda stifled, and so if they submit a comment to someone on the outside and that comment circulated amongst members and members just don't feel it's important enough or it's not part of that topic, you know, then I think that's where there's the disconnect, you know what I mean? So maybe the public comment would work, but I I really do think it's time to get some public input because, like you mentioned, it's been quite a while. And I personally, to be frank, just would have liked to have seen more progress in three years with what's going on instead of fruitful conversations. No offense. I'm just saying, you know, to me, I think there should be more being done at this. Thank you.
And I just wanna make it clear, we're treating this committee because it's an official-appointed committee advisory board from the city council. And we're treating it like every other advisory board. And so no other advisory board just sits around the table and chats with the public. They couldn't, they go through an agenda, they conduct business, we take attendance, they can get kicked off. And so you go by what the agenda is. So if you look at some of the other agendas, they do have the section for the public input. And so that's the only difference between what this board has done and some of the other boards. None of the other boards just have public show up and talk anywhere on the agenda and sit around and shoot the breeze. That's not, okay. So if people have that expectation that they're just gonna be participating throughout all of it, we need to manage that.
No, they wanted to be able to submit comments or get put on the agenda, which is just like.
And we tightly manage what gets put on other agendas for other boards.
Okay, all right. Okay, that brings us to a staff announcements.
Um so most immediately coming up this Friday is the first Friday where they're um doing the Cinco de Mayo celebration. It's both a block party and the first Friday that Elizabeth coordinates with having a market using that activated space downtown. Um next week, um the chief mentioned this, on the eleventh at five thirty is the Police Memorial. Um same location outside of the police office or the police department. On Friday, the thirteenth, I almost said February, on Friday, um May thirteenth is the Police Academy graduation. We do have three individuals that we anticipate bringing on following that. Um reminder to let Holly know if you're interested in attending the Chamber Art Gala, which is on May twentieth. The tickets are on sale and they are limited. And um Adam shared the tree planting on May nineteenth at four thirty at the recycling center.
And I've got one. You guys won't see uh me at your next meeting. I will be out of the country. Mark Loy will be covering that as he has in the past, and he, since this is a more extended absence, I can't. I don't think I've ever taken a two-week vacation, but I'm taking a two-week vacation. Um he is available uh through Heather should something come up and and I am unreachable by text or email, so we'll have that covered while I'm gone.
Thank you all, and Eric, you deserve that two-week vacation. I'm happy for you. Good deal. Any other staff announcements? Oh, okay, all right. Consent calendar B, councillor Vio?
Mayor, I move that we approve consent counter B.
Okay, we have a motion.
I will second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, Matt, please start voting. Okay.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, good. Thank you, everybody. That brings us down to the last item on the agenda is uh council comments. Councillor um Hensley.
Well, it's that time of year again that I will point out that Trinidad and Adam State is getting close to graduation. Um this is just such a great um time for our students that are here in the valley in Alamosa. Um some of them are are local students, and obviously some come to stay in Alamosa and get their education. This will be my thirty thirtieth graduation that I will be part of. So, but i- it's just as exciting as it was for the first one.
Okay, any other comments? Uh council comments? Or if not, I'll just wrap it up. Uh you all recommended that councillor Carson and myself go talk to this uh county commissioner who came in from Douglas County. I just wanna say that everyone who participated, including Commissioner Lasky, uh let their voices be heard about the importance of water in our community. Uh you would be very proud of also councillor Carson. He was a very informative, professional, uh thoughtful, and he gave some real good scenarios. So I just wanna commend him on a job well done uh at that meeting. Okay, all right. So if we don't have any other comments, this meeting is officially adjourned. Thank you, everybody.